Hi, welcome. This is the Freeport Town Council meeting number 03-23. Thank you for your patience as we get our technology lined up and get our Zoom link connected so that we can carry the meeting on virtual as well as in person. Welcome all of you to our town council chambers. It's always great to see a room full of people. We're going to start with our roll call and then we'll get to our meeting. I'm sorry, first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will now establish who's here this evening. Council of Pillsbury.
Present.
Council of Fornia.
Here.
Councilor Lawrence.
Here.
Councilor Daniele.
Here.
Councilor Bradley.
Here.
The Vice Chair, John Egan, is here. I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. And Chair Dan Pilch is on Zoom.
Yes, I'm here on Zoom.
All right. Next item is to waive the reading of the very finely crafted minutes from our last meeting, number 2-23, as presented by Chris Wolf. Any exceptions, or can we go ahead and take a motion to accept the minutes?
Will we accept the minutes?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Minutes passed unanimously. Our next item is announcements. I have just a couple. I don't have anything printed, so I don't know if we're going to miss out on something, but nope, none, okay, thanks, Chris. I did just want to mention that the Housing Committee, of which I am a liaison to, is going to be meeting this Saturday. So if anybody's watching that pattern of what we're doing with our Housing Committee, we'll be meeting this Saturday. I'm hoping Peter can open up Town Hall for us Saturday morning so we can have it here. Also, I just wanted to, well, I'll save that for information exchange. Any other announcements? Okay. Our next item is information exchange. This is an opportunity for councilors to share updates or information on their participation in various committees. We have a robust set of committees that are performing all kinds of functions for the town government across our community comprised of entirely a volunteer resident. So if you have an interest, and at some point you have an interest because you're sitting here this evening, please consider checking out our committee structure and talk to the Clerk, Chris Wolf, if you have an interest. It's a very easy one-page application, and we continually have openings on our committees, so there'll be a chance for you to join. Any councilors have updates or information exchange? All right, I have just two quick things. I was at a Greater Portland Council of Governments session last week hosted by GP Cog, and their invited guests were two members from the governor's staff talking about housing and specifically LD 2003, which was the law that was passed by the legislature earlier in 2022, last session, and whose implementation date is coming up this July. GP Cog has available, this is mainly for the manager, staff and some resources for helping our planning department get ready for implementation of LD 2003. And they're specifically trying to work on a regional basis, which is their whole reason to be, is to work regionally within their footprint on the implementation of 2003. I think we're in pretty good shape in terms of the specific language that we might need in our ordinance to implement that, but there's lots of other things that are going on besides the accessory dwelling units, which is the thrust of that legislation. Also, GP Cog has a beta test of a platform that they're willing to share with us, talked with Paul Johnson on tracking short-term rental data. And so they have a tool that can provide live, up-to-the-minute information about short-term rentals in a community and link them up with residences if you can have a talk to your property database. So that might be some interesting information for us to keep track of what's happening with short-term rentals in our community. So good resources from GP Cog. Anything else on information exchange? All right, we will move on to the Town Manager's Report. Peter Joseph.
Well, I'll fly through this because I know we've got a long, two items on the agenda that will take up a lot of the meeting. I want to start by thanking our Buildings and Grounds Crew here in town, who, as everybody, I think, knows, we had a cold snap this weekend, so we did have a few freeze-ups and broken pipes and service lines, water mains, things like that in town, but we were lucky that none of the town buildings, mainly due to being checked Friday night, Saturday morning early, heat was all on, things like that. So I want to thank them for doing the extra work to make sure we didn't have any catastrophic losses to our facilities. I know a bunch of people did. I'm really glad we did not. People, I mean, other municipalities who weren't paying attention to their buildings. So we are starting work on the Climate Action Plan. The Sustainability Advisory Committee, who, there's a member in the room, a couple of members maybe in the room, and they're going to be steering that. It's going to be, there's going to be a massive public input push throughout that entire plan. So the main goal of that is to gather input from the public, organizations, groups in town. And we have a website that has been dedicated to that, where you can track action, find out what's going on, what the next steps are, and it's freeportclimateaction.org, right? Right, okay, good. So freeportclimateaction.org, if you want to follow along with the Climate Action Plan and find out what the next steps are to participate in that. Like I said, they're going to, the town is going to be looking for a large amount of public input throughout that process. And likewise, the Electrify Everything Program, Electrify Everything is the, what it's been deemed, that's the program that we voted on a couple of weeks ago. Mr. Stevens brought it in front of the council, and the FCAN group was behind that as well. That is also kicking off this week. We are finalizing the write-up and the application forms and things like that. It also has a dedicated web address that you can use to find it, and it's freeportmain.com, so our base website slash electrify. And that'll take you right to where the application forms will be and where there'll be a write-up of the qualifications for the program. So I won't waste everyone's time on the, you know, the requirements that you're going to have to meet, because that's all going to be right up on the website. And that's targeted towards low and moderate income residents, and I think it's capped at 90% AMI, which is median income, is what we settled on for that program. So please check it out if it's something you're interested in. It'll help you do replacements in your home of heaters, hot water pumps, heat pumps, things like that. It'll be a rebate program, and it's going to dovetail with the Efficiency Main Rebate Program. So both of them will be utilized together to get you pretty much a full refund for what you're doing. And last but not least, our budget process is kicking off. We have an item up here to discuss tonight at the council level to set the budget schedule. I'll talk a little bit more about that, but based on our discussion at your recent workshop, our Finance Director and I, Jessica and I, will be doing a presentation on the 28th before we present the capital program, getting into more detail. We had a lot of questions and I think a lot of discussion at the council level, probably that everybody's going to want to have before we start that process. So stay tuned on the 28th. We're looking right now, but whether that can be a workshop before the meeting. If not, we would dedicate probably the first hour of the meeting to just doing that budget presentation, the overview, and the whole process, not just the capital program presentation that'll be later in the meeting. So I hope that'll, and maybe there'll be more concerns or suggestions or recommendations at that workshop, and so we'll get to those before we get into the actual budget, so we can do everything that you guys want. That's all I got right now, Mr. Chair, so I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, very good. In the agenda tonight is a printout of our budget schedule for anybody that's wanting to know what happens after the 28th and subsequent meetings. We have a pretty robust schedule, nearly weekly through the end of February into March and early April. All of those meetings are public and will be transmitted, and so I encourage you, if you have questions or information requests about our capital budget or operating budget, this is the season when we cover that information. Our next item on the agenda is public comment period. This is a chance where the microphone is yours to address the council on any particular questions or issues or concerns. Occasionally, we get a thank you. If you have something to share with the council that is not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time to come forward and share that. We have a three-minute limit for participation. We don't really, like, chop the microphone off right then, but we just encourage you, if you're speaking, to think about that in respect for the time and everybody else's participation here. So we will open up the public comment period, and please come forward. The microphone looks like it's not pointed in the right direction, but it actually is. And you can just announce who you are and share with us what's on your mind.
Also, anybody on Zoom that wants to participate for public comment, please use the raised hand feature, and I'll make sure the Chair recognizes you when we're done with the people in the room.
Good evening, Bob.
Good evening. Bob Stevens, Moose Crossing, giving your report from Freeport Climate Action Now, following up on the council's decision to use some of the ARPA funds for rebate programs. We're working to pull together information to publicize that. Also, the Lands and Waters Committee is picking up on the suggestion that was expressed at that meeting by some of you, that rather than provide rebates for individuals to buy equipment that could be used by many folks, rather than kept in individual garages, to perhaps have the town buy some of that equipment and set up a program where it could be loaned out for use by everybody. So they've been talking, as I think some of you know, with Earl Gibson at Public Works, who's in contact with the library, to somehow work out a way of the equipment being stored, checked in, checked out, kept in good shape, and that process is going on. And thank you very much for the idea, and I hope that the council is able to come forward with a way to make that work. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Thanks to everybody involved with Freeport Climate Action Now. It's great to see this wave of energy coming from our community to address this issue. Any other members of the public wish to comment on something that's not on our agenda this evening? We have a number of public hearings, so we'll have plenty of chances, if you're here, for something that is on tonight's agenda. This is for non-agenda items this evening. All right, anybody on Zoom, Peter?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. One last chance. I don't see any hands. All right, we'll move on. Our seventh order of business is to take action on the following items, as read by the Council Chair or Acting Chair, to consider action relative to adopting our February 7th, 2023 Consent Agenda. Be it ordered that the February 7th, 2023 Consent Agenda be adopted. This is in our packets. There's a routine renewal for liquor license for Main Beer Company, a list of an extremely generous schedule of donations to Freeport Community Library, donations to Freeport Fire Rescue, as well as the Heating Assistance Fund. If anybody wants to see this, a classic example of how generous Freeport is, this is a really excellent reflection of our values as a community. Any reason why we should take anything off of the consent agenda for a specific conversation this evening? All right. We have it be it ordered. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other conversation, discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
And Speaker Counselor Pilch voting affirmative. Seven to zero is the vote. Our next item is item number 14-23, I'm sorry, 15-23, to consider action relative to a new liquor license for the Hilton Garden Inn. This is a public hearing. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. This is a public hearing for liquor license for the Hilton Garden Inn. There's materials on this application on the table in the back, if anybody has questions. We heard a summary of this at our last meeting. Is there anyone here that wishes to comment or participate in the public hearing on the liquor license for the Hilton Garden Inn? Great. You're welcome to address us, but you're not required. This is a public hearing. For anyone else in the community? If you'd like to participate, feel free to come forward.
No Zoom comments either, Mr. Chair. No hands, I should say.
Okay, so Counselor Pillsbury, could you please close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that was seven to zero. All right, so that's the public hearing portion. Mr. Manager, we have anything out of the ordinary in this request before we take action?
Nope. Same business, new owner, I believe, is the reason for the transfer of the license. So there have been liquor licenses at that location of various types and classifications throughout the years, and I don't believe the license has lapsed, correct? It's just, so, they're currently licensed, they have a new owner, they need to reissue the license in the owner's name. We see these a lot in businesses, so.
Okay, any other questions? All right, one more time, Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a new liquor license for the Hilton Garden Inn be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Congratulations. Our next item is item number 16-23. We'll have a signed version of this available at the end of the meeting. Or maybe-
You can get it tomorrow from the town clerk if you don't want to stay until the bitter end of 10:30 tonight.
Our next item is item number 16-23, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing to discuss proposed ordinance amendments to Section 602. Counselor Fornia, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for February 28, 2023, at the council meeting, starting at 6:00 PM at Town Hall, 30 Main Street, to discuss proposed ordinance amendments to Section 602, period, site review, excuse me, site plan review of Chapter 21 Freeport zoning ordinance.
Second.
All right, we're just setting a public hearing for this discussion on our, updating our zoning ordinance. Any other comments or questions? I thought I saw the, yeah, the planters in the back of the room. Maybe we could just have a minute to set the context for this discussion? Caroline?
So we've talked a lot about updating our ordinances. This is one we talked a while back. This, before you tonight, is just amending the site plan ordinance, so that's the aspect of projects for people that are coming in, throw things like site plan amendment to do in addition at parking, change site features, build a new building, or do a change of use. So there's a whole bunch of cleanup, which is, you're going to get tired of me saying that to you, because we have a lot of that. There's cleanup. This also increases the public notification requirements for bigger projects. It changes the thresholds for the different levels of review. The way it's set up, it would give increased ability to the town planner to sign off on certain changes up to 1,000 square feet. It would give the ability for the staff review board to look at different projects for changes up to 2,000 square feet, and then bigger projects would still go to the project review board. There's a couple minor cleanup. To some of the standards, just to add a little bit of clarity, one of the things the planning board did kind of get in to a little bit discussion is that we currently have it set up so that any appeals from the project review board go to Superior Court. We realized during this that we were missing a clear appeal process for decisions of the town planner and decisions of staff review, so we did add that in here. They kind of, they left the recommendation that appeals go to staff, staff review appeals and project review go to Superior Court, but they did flag that as a bigger policy decision that the council could reconsider at some point. I think that was a minute and a half. Happy to answer questions.
When you say there, you, I'm assuming that's the planning-
Planning board, yep. So we had the planning board work on it. We did send it to project review for some input during the process.
And I also assume that the list of changes that you just summarized very briefly, thank you, will be available as a side note for next week, or the next session when we have our public hearing, that there'll be a summary of the proposed changes to make it easy to focus on those?
Yes, there's, everything's in track changes, which is really hard to read because there's a lot of formatting, but that's how we needed to present it via the charter. So page one of the staff memo gives you a nice snapshot, but I can put some slides up on screen to make it easier for the public to walk through.
Thank you.
And just to clarify for the council, you said the choice of sending it straight to Superior Court for an appeal, the other alternative is that the council could designate a local body to hear that, like the appeals board, correct?
Yeah, we did talk about different local bodies. It would need to be the Board of Appeals. It would need to make some tweaks. So we could revisit that as a separate project if the council wants to. Not going to jeopardize our appeal record by commenting on it.
Is that the policy feedback that the board was looking for the council, the policy decision that you mentioned?
No, I think the board was like, hey, why, if someone wants to appeal a decision, why are we making it go to court, which is another level of challenge? I think there's a fine line. You also don't want to make it too easy to get everything appealed. You know, there's a fine line between wanting people to develop, they spend a lot of money to go through process and respond to public input, so finding a right balance there. We did try to see if we could make staff appeals go to, like, project, our project review or staff review board by the attorneys, like, you can't. That's going to go to Board of Appeals. And if anything goes to court, it needs a good record, which they would get from staff review or project review. But happy to talk about it whenever, with the council.
Just for members in chambers this evening, there is a copy of the proposed change on the table in the back there, including the concise memo of proposed substantial changes to the ordinance, if anybody's interested. Any other comments from the council? We're just setting the public hearing. We're not going to have a conversation this evening, but at our next meeting on February 28th. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote to set the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you. Our next item is item number 17-23, to consider action relative to accepting the CRP Community Action Grant for the two communities of Freeport and Yarmouth for our shared sustainability coordinator. Counselor Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that the CRP Community Action Grant for Freeport and Yarmouth be accepted.
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded. We've been talking about this position for quite a long time. Peter, is there anything else that we need to know about before we accept this grant?
Nope, they're, just that we are already very close to hiring somebody. I know that both towns have done, started the selection process and have candidates and have been in, both Freeport and Yarmouth together. Caroline, her counterpart, Judy, their counterpart, have been interviewing people. We're probably a couple of weeks out from getting somebody an offer and kind of locking that up if that works out. So this is required for that to move forward at this point, unless we don't want to accept the grant, which I don't think I've heard yet, so.
I don't think so. Any other comments? This is great evidence of regional focus. The issues related to this topic are not just ours or not just any other single community, so it's a great effort to work together with our neighbor. All right, it's been moved and seconded. We're going to go ahead and take the vote to accept the grant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Seven to zero? Thank you. Congratulations, Sustainability Committee. You'll have a coordinator very soon. Our next item is item number 18-23, to consider action relative to an easement request from 22 Main Street Housing Development. Counselor Daniele, could you please read the be it ordered and the be it further ordered?
Be it ordered that the easement request for 22 Main Street Housing Development be approved. Be it further ordered that the town manager be authorized to execute said easement with any non-substantive changes that may be required, subject to project review board review and approval of the proposed project.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We've had a couple of conversations about this topic previously, but tonight is the action to go ahead and approve that easement. Do we have a presentation, or do we have a, just discussion?
Don't have much for presentation. We did talk about this previously. There were some questions. There is easement language in front of you. It's fairly basic. There's really only three pages of substance. There's a few other, you know, following pages behind it for signatures. This was developed initially by our attorney, then back and forth between the parties, with minor changes, I think, from the recommended language, and it seems, I'm pretty confident this gives the town some protections in there, but the bigger question, I think, is a political question that has been raised to the council. So that, the policy question, whether to grant this or not, is up to the council. In terms of the actual language, I'm fairly confident, and I think one thing that went into this with some counselor feedback is it's tightened down a little bit so that you are only authorizing this to, for the lifetime of the project's specific use that's being proposed on that piece of land. So it's a permanent easement in perpetuity if that stays a multifamily building forever. But if that changes use, there's the provision in here where the town can unilaterally revoke the easement. So for example, if it becomes, you know, a store or a CVS or a Rite Aid or something in the future that we don't want to, commercial purposes, exiting across the property, we can revoke that. It's only for the current LLC or their successors assigns for the owner of the building.
That's what I want to clarify. It would survive a transfer of title, but not a change of use.
Correct. Not a change of use. The town could choose to leave it in place, but that's our decision, based on what the future use is, so.
All right. Counselor Bradley.
Question, Peter. The introductory paragraph to the easement says, "for valuable consideration paid." Was there consideration paid?
We are not proposing any at this time. That would-
Why does the document suggest that there is?
I could get a dollar. I could get a dollar.
I don't want a dollar. I want a lot of money. How do we have that conversation about consideration? It hasn't been considered to this point. When will it be considered?
Right now. Or when you think that's appropriate, if you want to-
I don't know. I mean, I'm not involved in this discussion. I just read these things that get sent to me. So it seems to me that this is a easement that makes traffic from this project better for the project, and it's of value to them. It's something we own. It's something that we've been asked to grant to them. We're apparently prepared to do it. I'd like us to get some consideration for that for the taxpayer. I don't know if others feel the same way, but it's, it seems to me an important part of doing business in this town, and it often comes before us. And when I saw that there had been for valuable consideration paid, I was curious to know what it was. If none's been done, then I'd like to-
There's no handshake that I'm aware of, that we were-
Exchanging dollars, so no.
So I'd like us to either have that discussion now. I don't know what an appropriate amount is, or whether we need to do more work to figure that out, but I would like, before I vote on this, to know what consideration we're going to get.
Yeah, so that, I'll just give you the only benefit that we see beside not building more asphalt and not having, you know, more connections than need to be done for traffic and things like that, is it's a traffic benefit to, for the entire town, to route traffic in this direction instead of having two-way traffic in and out. So it builds less asphalt, it makes use of what's already there, and it puts traffic in a circulatory pattern that's better than having an exit on West Street. My understanding is the applicant can and may, in the future, decide to have a two-way entrance there, that this isn't contingent on that, but this, from staff's perspective, would be a benefit to the entire town. We ask developers to do this all throughout town, when they're, we ask them to use shared entrances and exits for parcels, and there are zones where it's required, if possible, for us to ask them those questions. So we're not, I guess, all that I'm going to say is we're not doing anything here that we don't request other developers to do that have a budding parcels when they develop things at the same time. If the council feels there's-
Are you making a recommendation about consideration?
Yeah, my recommendation would be not to charge, but-
So give them something that-
That's based on nothing other than the one reason I just put forward to you. There's no other reason for that recommendation. So if you don't think there's a benefit there, you wouldn't probably agree with-
I can say there was no benefit. I just said that I thought that when the town gives something or transfers something of value to a third party, that the taxpayer ought to be, receive some compensation for that. I don't know what amount in this case, but I don't- I don't feel comfortable just giving them something.
And if you didn't agree with, that what I just described was valuable, then you probably definitely wouldn't agree with giving it for not receiving anything in return.
I, I can accept what you said, that there's a value in creating a circulation pattern to us, there's also a value in creating it for them, and so it's ours now to share with them, and apparently it's to their benefit, even though they would go forward with this project without it, I still think we ought to be asking for some consideration, but that's just my point of view.
Councilor Fornier.
I'm not sure if you have the answer to this, Peter, but in my memory, the prior owner had the agreement by a previous council, if I understand it right, that if that was going to be developed, and that would have been for retail, not for housing, that we would utilize the easement down through the town property for the various reasons that was talked about earlier, what, do you know, was there any discussion along the line of what that value would be with that, when that was proposed, I know that was prior to your tenure, but...
I, I don't, I wasn't a part of those, it's a good question, I'm going to throw a hail mary, I don't think our town planer recalls that happening, if you do, step up, if you don't, you don't have to, Caroline, no, she's shaking her head now.
I don't see, I didn't see record when I went back.
I, I do want to, the only thing I want to add is it was in purpose as an easement, but there is currently an MOU granting access to the current property owner, which is not permanent, in the sake that this easement would be, you know, mostly permanent, it would definitely be permanent for the proposed use if it's approved, it would not be permanent for other uses, but the MOU that was, that is currently in effect with Mosher Properties is just a memorandum of understanding that the town has agreed to let it happen, there's not a, they don't have a legal right to do that if we decide in the future, so we would be encumbering it a little bit more for that specific use that's being proposed than what currently exists, but if for all intents and purpose, it's likely that a commercial establishment that was like, what was being proposed, would generate, I know there's been talk about parking spaces and things like that, but I would think a commercial establishment would have been expected to generate a lot more traffic, there are standards for residential traffic, you know, it's a couple of trips a day, depending on the number of cars, units, houses, things like that, so based on what we see for traffic out there, just from sitting here and looking at it, there's not a capacity issue, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I can't tell you what the exact percentage impact would be, but you could sit out there for an hour and see three cars go by on a slow day, or there might be five and then nothing for another hour, it's not heavily used.
On the vacant lot?
What's that?
Mean on the vacant lot?
No, just on our driveway right now, so.
Other comments, Councilor Lawrence?
This was something the town went to the, them for, right, and to say, hey, have we tried this, and it wasn't the other way around, we wanted to say, hey, this might be a better way to have traffic go through, otherwise you'd already have the things all cut out.
I don't know how the MOU, I think what you're saying is correct, but I can't 100% say that's how that conversation happened, I do know that personally, in the past 10 years, probably eight years ago, myself and the former town planner had talks with Mosher Properties when they were still, they had a new development proposal, not the one that the MOU covers, and we did discuss some possibilities about, for example, sharing a driveway, where we would move the town hall driveway and their driveway to be one, that didn't work out because of the alignment of the property, I think we suggested that to anybody that's looking to develop the property, but it really needs to work for both parties, that would have, if that had gone anywhere, that would have been a discussion similar to this in front of the council at the time, it never got to that level because it didn't work for property alignment, but we have had those conversations with previous applicants, yeah.
Okay, and this is something we ask other businesses to do.
Yeah, I think in our zoning ordinance, we want to create the least amount of entrances and exits as possible where there are shared property lines, we don't require it, it's not hard, but it's...
Yep, I get it, but this is, and so we're just following through with what we...
I would say in a similar, in a similar spirit to what might be suggested at a project review board meeting to a developer, like, hey, at a concept level, hey, there's a driveway right next to there, have you talked with the abutter about that? And oftentimes, we get the answer, no, it's not feasible, or no, they want $200,000 for an easement, so they end up plowing two driveways right next to each other, or no, they want this or they want that, so, or we hate each other and we can't have a conversation together or something like that, so there's a lot of reasons they don't happen, Caroline could probably give you good examples of some of those discussions, but there have been some, correct?
Yeah, in some places, like Route One South, for example, we give incentives for people to share driveways and to minimize curb cuts, we like, we like sharing a one-way driveway, in case you're interested, is reduced width, so it does decrease the amount of impervious area in the urban impaired watershed, we do like the reduction in the curb cut of Main Street, and yes, we give people parking credits quite regularly to connect parking lots, so you're not going in dead-ending, turning around, because that's not good for circulation.
And this benefit is, benefits the town, because we don't have another cut on Main Street where people are turning at the la, right at that light, or just pass the light?
Yes, they would, they would be proposing to close that curb cut on Main Street that people, you know, you see people park there now, the traffic, town hall traffic, although, you know, I parked on the West Street lot today, that is not our lot, that is not our exit, that lot could turn into something else someday, so that exit from town hall is down that hill and down Depot Street, so it is creating a different traffic pattern, in fact, the people there could find it less convenient, but it's one-way circulation working into what we have, the connection's actually already there, and it was incorporated, the potential for it in the town hall site plan, just in case you're wondering.
Caroline, can you confirm that the sequence that Councilor Lawrence just outlined, that that's, that was kind of how this came about, was the suggestion from...
Yeah, you know, anytime someone goes to buy a property, they come and look through the file, and so, you know, we talked to him about it, we noted that it was in there, we said it may or may not be something that the council's open to, but it was something he could come forward with, you know, I do think, I'm not the engineer, but I think he could get rid of a couple parking spaces at a couple feet, and you could have two-way traffic in and on West Street, or he could have tried to design it with an entrance off Main Street, that wasn't the route he chose to go, which I think is a good thing to minimize that second close curb cut there.
Right, thank you. Other comments, Councilor Pillsbury?
So, in the agreement as it's presented, we, if we granted the easement, there's nothing to say the developer can't later on make entrance and exit on West Street?
That's correct. Yeah, they could...
Is that in our best interest to have it laid out that way? Because aren't, isn't the argument that we want to direct traffic one way so that it's better flow, why wouldn't we close off that possibility to then exit onto...
Yeah, so they could go, if, let's say it gets approved as the current configuration is proposed, and then in the future, the developer or the, you know, future owner or anybody that has rights to it or interests could go back to project review board and propose a site plan change, kind of like what Caroline had just described, they may have to do some finagling on the, rearranging on the property to get it to work, that could happen in the future, I'm guessing that if we wanted to add something further down in the language about the easement goes away, in that section, the revocableness of the easement, that's not a word I know, revocability, I don't know, something similar where if one-way circulation on the site isn't needed in the future, that we would be able to revoke it, I'm getting a nod from the back of the room that that would be acceptable to the developer, we could work that language in, I don't think there's any need to keep it if that's the case, if future property owner or wants to work out some completely foreign traffic circulation idea that we haven't even considered, we don't need this easement after that, yes.
I, I mean, I, I'm still, I, you know, I'm sort of siding with Ed, I mean, I feel like it's something of value to the town, and, you know, I don't know what we've done in the past in these situations, but it seems to me that, you know, we maybe haven't taken the step to figure out what value it actually does have, and then to have an agreement that says, we're going to grant access to it, but then you can change your mind and do whatever you want and still have access to that, I, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Councilor Daniele?
I think the Council of Pillsbury point, that if we say yes, and we're all saying that this is a good idea, that we should have one-way traffic, then it shouldn't be, that maybe this parcel shouldn't be allowed to go back to two-way traffic going onto West Street, I think that's what you're saying, right, like, let's not allow it to go backwards until there's a change of use or something like that, I think I would like to see that get put in there, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I know what you're looking like that for Caroline, because we'd be hard-pressed to restrict their ability to do a development proposal, but we could have an agreement, or it could be, I think the way it would be worded is there would be a clause in the easement, that if that stops, the easement is revocable at that time.
Yeah, I think if you're concerned about, like, keeping that easement there, I mean, people can change their site plans for whatever reason, I mean, the other thing is, you know, what if he buys the abutting lot, like, you know, he could find a way to make those two lots work, and then he wouldn't need this anymore, so I wouldn't want to restrict that if there's a better way to alter the traffic flow in the future, like, we might decide right now, instead of having curb cut off Main Street or two-way off West, this is good, but if there's a better option that presents itself as we see redevelopment in the village, I wouldn't want to smother that opportunity.
I think we could come to a one or two-sentence description in there, like, if the site, I mean, I'm just thinking aloud, but if the site, one-way traffic no longer becomes necessary on the site, the town could revoke the easement, if there's another access or egress installed in the property to the satisfaction of the town's project review board, we could revoke the easement, those type of clauses would probably work fine.
I'm not worried about removing the easement, I'm more worried that it's going to go to, to, like, the, it might decide it to go to two-way traffic, and we're saying we don't want it to go to two-way traffic, so if we grant the easement, I don't want there to be two-way traffic, if there's a better way to have flowing one-way traffic, that's fine, you can redesign it, I'm still open to that, you don't have to use the easement, but I don't want to go backwards, and we're fixing a problem that we've identified, and this is what we're trading it for, so I don't want it to go back.
I agree, Jake, I think, though, that we empower our planning board to come up with the data and look at those situations on a case-by-case, the, I don't think the traffic pattern changes overnight, Thursday night it's one-way and Friday night it's two-way, I think that has to come through a permit and an application process by either the proposed partner or subsequent owners, so I don't think that would happen sort of snap, and I think we could pretty easily put language in here that, that would say that the council at least gets a review of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't think we can say, we don't ever want it to see it happen, because we empower our planning board to make those decisions.
Would a traffic study in the future for a site plan amendment prevent that from happening, if it was going backwards in quality?
They had a traffic study done, we had, it doesn't look at the two-way because they were proposing the one-way, peak hour traffic is kind of how we look at all this stuff, it's 15 to 17 trips in the peak hour of traffic during the day overall, based upon the number of units, multifamily actually has a lower factor than other commercial uses or single family, but I won't bore you with that, there's nothing that I'm aware of in the ordinance if they can meet the standards, that would restrict them going to two-way traffic at some point, and, you know, conditions change, we could change the conditions on Main Street where the site distance got better, or we have less traffic because everyone's taking the train, there could just be various factors, I think, if you want to put a limiting factor, I don't feel like the ordinance would necessarily do it, they would have to come in and amend their site plan, but if they can show that they meet the two-way standard and design it appropriately, the board would be obligated to approve it under whatever standards we have in place at that point in time.
I think you need a private agreement, otherwise, which hasn't been discussed at this point, but I understand what you're asking.
Are we trying to solve a problem that isn't there right now, I mean, I understand wanting to tit-for-tat, but how often does that change, like you said, it doesn't change overnight, it, and it's not, I, I guess I could see a reason for it to change, but I don't think that's something that's going to happen right away, and, and I don't, we don't need to restrict them, I mean, just using a driveway that's already there.
It would be a cost to re-engineer, to re-go, you know, re-approve your plan, so I don't think any future owner would do it unless there was a mildly compelling reason, I don't think it would be done on a whim, a few thousand dollars, or tens of thousands of dollars worth of work to rebuild a parking lot, re-stripe it, I don't want to go on the record saying it'll never happen, if there's a reason in the future that motivates somebody beyond that cost, I'm sure that they would take it.
I want to go back to a little bit of the history, my memory serves me, there was two buildings there, one sold buttons, one sold fabric, there was two entrances off Main Street, and that was back in the old days, which I was around, a couple of us on this council were there too, when traffic was a big issue, and the town at that time decided to try to eliminate curb cuts on the Main Street to avoid some of the hazards we had for emergency vehicle response, for floor traffic, to eliminate some of the traffic backups, back in those days, we had parking on both sides of Main Street, so I think what I'm looking at, we made some changes years ago to try to address some of the traffic needs, which this plan here does that now, and I think that we were looking forward at the previous owner to have some sort of arrangement that would allow that to continue, that was agreed upon, so I think, you know, we've, we've done a good job, we beat our head on that, and I think this is a good solution, so.
Councilor Bradley, looks like you want to say something?
Yeah, let's do it. So, I mean, I've already made my point about consideration, and I won't beat that horse, but I think it's important to, it's important to me, giving something up that they don't own, a benefit to them without cost, even though we see a benefit in the traffic pattern, but the bigger issue here that this presents is that instead of just being neutral, as we have been with respect to this project, which is controversial in this community, as everybody sitting here knows, we're being complicit, in other words, we're, we are, as a council, saying, here's something that makes this project work, and we want to see it, and I worry personally about the message that that sends to the people who are permitting, saying, ah, the council gave them this, they didn't have to give it to them, they must approve the project and want us to approve it, so there are still things to be done on this, approvals to be gained, I know, and I, and I feel conflicted, because I've been one of the people who has supported downtown housing, and this is downtown housing, we got what we asked for, it's sitting there, but when we said we wanted downtown housing, we didn't approve applications for any particular, every particular location, and if I look at what's in some of the charters that we have coming up, I can see that we're going to be doing revisions to a lot of the standards that would apply to this project, and when we have something that's right at the gateway, right at the entrance to town, which a lot of people in the community object to because it's blocky, because it's big, because it doesn't look like the rest of the town, it's going to set a bad message and a bad vibe for our downtown revisioning, I take that to heart, and I say to myself, I don't want to be part of making it happen, even though I apparently don't have any ability to keep it from happening, I would like to see some consideration for what we're giving them, I've said that, I would also like to see us wait until those standards are developed, until we grant permission to put this signature project in a place where so many people object, and I'm affected by their objections, I don't think that they're saying is arbitrary or capricious or any other word you might use to dismiss it, it's serious comments from people who've been, who are serious about the town, some of them are in the rooms, some of them are in the community, there's lots of them that we all respect that, that object to this project, those are my points, I don't want to affirm it, I'm not going to vote for it, I'd like us to see, get some consideration for it if we do approve it, thank you.
To Councilor Bradley's point, I don't think my personal preference on this project comes into play when the project could go forward either way, one way has a deficit to the town in that there's going to be two-way traffic, and the other way has a benefit to the town that's going to have one-way traffic, so to me, that's what I'm wrestling with, again, I still think I'd like to see some sort of nod that, hey, we're not going to go backwards and have it be two-way traffic even if, you know, we went through this process, but why would they be going through this process if they didn't expect to use the one-way traffic and keep it that way for a long time, so that's my perspective.
I think we could, we could consider an action to move this forward with a slight edit, which I think I've got general consensus on here, that we want to tie the granting of the easement to the current status of one-way traffic onto West Street, and if that changes, then we at least get a chance to review it, and that's not the proper way that that, well, those words would end up in an easement agreement, but we can leave it up to staff to make those changes, you have a sense of that, Peter, to be able to make that edit to this agreement?
Yeah, and I think that's something we can work on, and...
Yep.
Any other comments or suggestions before we go ahead and take a vote? Councilor Pillsbury?
So, we're not exploring any consideration for giving the easement?
I think the consideration is, it benefits the town. I think the consideration is it benefits the town to have it this way. That's the consideration. And we went to them. But the project goes forward, so we can either vote yes and have this, or no, and he's going to cut, and it's going to be two-way traffic on that. And if he's going to have to pay for it, we're going to have two-way traffic. That's what I, I mean, that, if it was my project, that's what I'd do. And if we don't take action today, I'd probably just go ahead with it anyway.
The easement agreement is one part of what we get to vote on, is my understanding. But the project review board, I was saying, planning board earlier, it's the project review board that is making these decisions, ultimately approves the project. I believe it's possible, if somebody wanted to make an amendment to the proposal, that we could consider that and vote on that amendment before we vote on the actual easement.
Well, except that, without any, I mean, none of us here are experts in this. I mean, we'd just be picking a number. I mean, I agree in principle with what Ed said, that this is something that the town has, and I don't want to get into the business of giving away town assets or rights to assets without any sort of consideration. But I don't know what that, that number is, if it's a number, you know, you know what I mean? I just, so...
I mean, fortunately, our town planner is here, and this is something that we ask other people to do, right? So like, what is the normal agreement for these sort of things?
I don't know what people are transferring easements for these days, the honest answer. The record, when I went back to look on what happened in the past, was pretty limited. I saw that, it looks like it went to municipal facilities before the town agreed to something in the past. I didn't see any discussion about financial exchange. And I, there's easements all over the place all the time. You know, we grant them for various things, trails, road, access. And we're not involved in the numbers.
So I'd like to move that we table this item to allow consideration of an appropriate consideration for the transfer of the easement to the grantee. And a recommendation back to the council for its consideration.
I'll second that.
All right. So before we take any action, there's a motion to table this item. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of tabling the item this evening?
For the specific purpose of developing a determination with respect to appropriate compensation or consideration, if any, for consideration of the council.
Mr. Acting Chair, if I may, before you ask for the vote again?
Yes.
Just, we haven't heard from one of our members. I don't know, because if Councilor Pilch would like to talk or not. I know his hand's not up, but just, I just feel like it's hard when you're on Zoom.
Sure, we can check in?
Just wanted to check in.
Dan, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, thank you, Jake. I'm happy to weigh in, just so you all know where I stand. I don't think it's going to, it's pretty consistent with what my comments were last time. The, the traffic pattern already exists. If we don't grant the easement, we're kind of taking away something that's there. I do think the town benefits from the new traffic pattern. I think sharing our driveway makes sense. It's what we ask others to do. Like one of you pointed out, if we don't grant the easement, the project still goes forward. It's just less optimal for the town. So I don't view this as a make or break decision for the project. I view it as more of an annoyance that just raises the cost a little bit, or causes them to go back and redesign some things. And lastly, one other comment that I wanted to address was that I think by our vote tonight, my opinion is that I'm not saying that I'm personally for the project, or I love the project, and I love everything about the project. It's not for us to decide. It's for the project review board to decide. There were concerns brought up with them. There probably will be some concerns at their next meeting about size, mass, scale, views, things like that. Those are all concerns that I think they should take to heart and take seriously and weigh on their own without assuming that our vote tonight is a stamp of approval for the project as a whole. So I'm in favor of granting the easement. I don't think it makes sense to ask for compensation for it.
Thanks, Dan. We have a, we have a motion, and it's been seconded, to table this item for discussion on further consideration. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Two in favor, five against. The motion to table fails. We have the original be it ordered and further ordered, been moved and seconded. Are we ready to vote on that?
Well, just suggesting that there, if the council wants to explore, if the council is generally in favor of the concept, and it sounds like at least five are, but I won't put words in Councilor Pillsbury or Bradley's mouth, but a majority of the council wants to explore, is there a compensation? I didn't hear, I wasn't counting and tallying. You can approve and ask me not to execute. This doesn't get executed until after the PRB process is done anyways. What you're doing tonight will give right title or interest for the applicant to move forward, showing the plans to the PRB off of his property onto our property. So if there's really a major heartburn, I don't want to give the impression that this is, you have to decide it tonight. However, we may go back and have a conversation with the applicant. They may very quickly say, "I'm only willing to do this," or "Not willing to do this," or "Not willing to do anything," or "I'll do this." So we can have that conversation after tonight with the applicant, even with you approving it. I don't want to give the impression that it's a drop dead, you have to do it now. That may not be great for the applicant from their timing perspective, though.
Well, that's a strange time to hear that option after we just took the vote.
Well, it's, it could be a basis for a different motion if...
Did you make it? I think we've spent a lot of time on this. I think we should go ahead and vote and get this done, because we're going around in circles, I feel. And I think this is better for the town to do it this way. The town did sort of mention, "Hey, have you thought about doing this?" So he wasn't even thinking, the developer wasn't, I don't think, was thinking about it. And I think it's great that the town did that. That's, because we're all looking for better, better options. I think the traffic flow will be much better this way. So I'm for granting this.
So we have a motion on the floor, and we had an amendment which failed. We're going to go ahead and take action on the item as it's been moved and seconded, with the additional direction to the manager to tie the life of this easement to the opportunity for exploration of any potential two-way traffic onto West Street as related to this site plan, which we'd probably hear from anyways, because that would have to go through our project review board. All right. All those in favor of the motion as it's on the floor today?
Aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. All those opposed?
Aye.
Two opposed. My apologies, Mr. Arsenal. We were not in a public, public hearing mode to take comments. I know you had something to share with us, but maybe we can get to that a little bit later. All right. Our next item is item number 19-23, to consider action relative to use of town property for Freeport Climate Action Now Memorial Park for a farmer's market. Councilor Daniele, could you please read the be it ordered?
Ken, be it ordered that the use of town property for Freeport Can to use Memorial Park for a farmer's market be approved pending receipt of assurance binder.
Been moved and seconded. Council conversation on approving a new location for the farmer's market, which was a big hit this past summer, moving it to Memorial Park. We've got a memo in our package about it. Yeah. Blazed through it. There it is, request for town property.
Pretty similar to the, the duration and scope of what you saw this summer next to the town hall. So, successful.
I'll just point out that on the third page of the memo is the list of dates. So if anybody wonders how much we're granting here, there's a list of dates that are associated with that. And we count on our expertise of our clerk to keep track of that schedule so that we don't have conflicting events.
Can I ask, Town Clerk, I'll, I'll speak into the microphone for you, but is there any conflict between what's on the books now for use of the park and those dates that have been requested by Ken? No, she said no for the, those in the audience, so.
Which I'm sure was already squared away before. All right. Any further conversation at the council about this? Council Fornia?
Probably don't open this can of worms, but I will. Of course, I have a lot of other parks and stuff where the events go on. There's fees charged to people. How come we're not charging a fee?
It's for the benefit of the town.
Okay, why not? Yeah. But there is also a value there, Ed.
The short answer is...
So, my, my whole point of bringing this up gets back to what we charge for, what we don't charge for, where we go. I'll leave it at that. I support this. But we need some consistency on how we approach our different events in town. Thank you.
The really, the really short answer is that there's a fee structure that does include rental of town buildings. This is, this room is one. It's got two different time lengths. I think the library might be included on that. Don't hold me to that. But for outdoor spaces, the council has not previously adopted a fee structure, which you are free to do at any time and may want to consider for, I mean, so we've got three, now three recurring uses in this park, which are wedding receptions from the building next door. We've got musical events that are now being, cultural events, I should say, that are being scheduled by Meeting House Arts and others, and outside groups. We've got this proposed use, which is a lot, and we've also, and I should say four, there's like, one-off events, like five Ks that hold their start-finish there, the July 4th race, things like that, where there are porta johns set up all around the outside of the park. So you've got kind of four recurring moderate users, I think.
Portable toilets.
Portable toilets, thank you. Is that not the correct, porta john, is that a bad term? I don't know.
We call it porta Peters, too.
There we go, yeah. So you got porta johns that go in the park, and people don't like it, because nobody likes those. Yeah. So those are, those are all valid things that the council could adopt, use schedules for full day, for half day, for that park, if we so wish. If, if you want to direct for some research, I'm sure Chris and I would be glad to, we've done it before, right, what other people are charging for a park use, so.
My, my whole point is something consistent, that's all. You know, because if it's a food cart that comes in, then we're going to charge. If this be, if this was a food cart, then they're going down there for an event, we'd be charging. So let's, that's all I'm asking. And, and if the rest of the council would like to have some recommendations from staff for the future, I would like to see that, something consistent that's reasonable that we can apply across the board. That's all.
Council Fornia, I don't have the exact timing, but I know that reviewing our fee schedule for municipal properties is part of an annual process in our budgeting. So this is, I think, an excellent example of an item that we need to bring up at that point. I agree with you. I think we need to have a consistent, well-publicized and fully transparent schedule of that. And, and it's, it's hard to find right now. So that'd be great. I agree.
Council Chair has his hand up. Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Dan.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, so I, I think, I'm in favor of moving forward this tonight. We don't charge for the park now. I think, you know, I don't want to start charging. And in particular, I, you know, was one of the group that helped get this thing off the ground, and we actually gave them some seed money last year to get up and going because we saw it as a big benefit to downtown. A lot of what we're trying to do with our vision is to bring more people downtown. We intentionally suggested doing it on a weekday. So this is all, these are all Friday dates, because we're trying to encourage more traffic on times when we don't otherwise have the foot traffic like we do on the weekends. So there are a lot of good reasons to promote this kind of activity. If we do charge them for it, I would quickly follow with a motion to then grant them the money that they can use to pay for the fee that we're charging them, which seems a little circular. So I think it's a great idea. I think the farmer's market, like, like somebody pointed out, was a big success. I'd love to see it go forward. This is sort of their, their next best option if they can't be at the prior location. So I can't wait to put my hand up for this one.
Thanks, Dan. I would agree. It's a little out of sequence to propose a fee right now when we don't have that as a consistent, but I firmly agree that we should have a consistent schedule. All right. Any other comments or conversations before we take action on this item? All right. The motion's been moved and seconded to go ahead and grant the use. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't see Dan's face, but I think I saw Dan's hand.
Yeah, I see. Hold on, there's a...
There we go. Seven to zero is the vote. Thank you. Our next item is item number 20-23, to consider action relative to adopting the FY 2024 budget schedule. I know that's why everybody's here tonight, to see what our budget schedule is. We're not going to read the whole list of dates. It's available on paper, save the finance director's reading of that. But Council Bradley, just to get this on the table, could you please read the be it ordered?
Be it ordered that the following fiscal year 2024 budget schedule be adopted.
Second. All right. It's been moved and seconded. We can have a little bit of conversation. There's probably not much to report about a schedule, but is there anything different this year, Jessica, or finance director?
No, this is actually more in line with our pre-COVID schedule. So we're kind of getting back to some public meetings with department heads and, and bringing the department heads into the workshops with council. So it'll look more familiar to those that might have been involved with the process four years ago, or three years ago. So. I had more time on the agenda because I thought we were doing the budget discussion tonight, so that's why it's a little longer. But other than stating that, I have no commentary to provide on the actual schedule.
Do we have anything else?
We got some hands, though. Nope, I don't, but counselors might have questions.
Council Bradley?
So I take it that the gaps between meetings are regular council meetings?
Right. There's a clarification. This is, this is not a council schedule. This is a budget discussion schedule. So there will be other meetings covering other things and, and regular meetings in addition to this. This is strictly to give dates and, and times of when the budget is going to be on the table.
These, these are not solely dedicated. So that's something that we thought may come up for discussion. We didn't have a resolution, but at your workshop, your Saturday workshop, there was a conversation, do you want to dedicate one whole meeting to something? So that would be, I think, something we would want, I would want to communicate it. I could work with, when we do the schedule and the agenda with the chair and vice chair, to maybe designate one of these meetings as an individual budget-only meeting, or to set a different time. I know I talked with Dan about that before, but that's potential feedback we're expecting to get tonight based on that workshop discussion.
Other comments on the budget schedule? Council Fornia?
Not the schedule. The final vote on the budget last year was a EA and A on the whole budget operations. Is that going to change this year, Peter, so we can vote? If there's a specific area in the budget that I want to vote against, will we have that opportunity?
It can be structured that way, within costs, within a certain realm of, I'm looking at Jessica. You can put more detail into more articles to vote adopt yes or no, right? We currently have like six articles. We could make it 12. We could make it, we could break it to any level of granularity the council wants. So let's talk about that, as long as, before that meeting, before that June, that second meeting in June that's on here, a majority of the council wants to give Jessica and I direction on what you want the adoption vote to look like. We can, we can set it up probably within reason, however you want it to look, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Right. I think, well, Dan, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there'll be plenty of opportunity during the workshops for that exact kind of conversation, Council Fornia, to be able to say, "We'd like to see more of this or less of that," so that, so that by the time we do get to the up or down vote at the end of June, everybody's had an opportunity to really chime in about those things. There's a lot there. And so I encourage you to slow us down in the workshop sessions when we're blazing through, you know, section, whatever those six-digit numbers are that Jessica puts in front of us, of the budget section items, 1, 3, dash, whatever, so we can, we can have those kind of conversations.
But I think, put it, if that's something you're, you want to settle, Council Fornia, before we do it, maybe put it on your agenda for that meeting before the before we do it, maybe put it on your agenda for that meeting before the adoption vote? Because we would need to know at least a week in advance how we're going to structure the adoption order, because that takes Jessica a day or two to put together.
I think we do have good discussion during the process. I just was uncomfortable with a yea and a vote on the whole budget. That's just me. And that's probably, that was new to me on how this, the town has done that in the many years I've been around. So that was all. I, I think that something's changed, and I take it kind of ties, I felt the tie in my hands, that's all, and maybe didn't. But I think, certainly, Mr. Vice Chair, we do have a handful of opportunity to have input, and I really appreciate, and this is a step in the right direction to, to make that happen.
Yeah, I, I guess in, in thinking about it, I just, I'd like to get back to you and do a little bit more research and make sure there aren't other implications for, for breaking out articles. I mean, off the top of my head, I'm not coming up with one directly, but I know like on a yea-nay vote with the entire budget, if it, you know, ends up going to a nay status, or, or it's a stalemate, right, it reverts to the proposed manager's budget. So if we break out the articles in a greater fashion, I just, I just want to be able to think through and make sure that we're considering all angles before I say there's absolutely no difficulty with that.
Well, I think that situation you described could absolutely happen, and that would be the council's will. If they voted no on a certain cost, let's say that there was, you know, a department by department, or more broad cost centers into 10 different, five or 10 different votes. I'm thinking like how school districts set them up, not necessarily by department or by school, but by cost center. If that's a no vote, I don't think that defaults to, I don't think the individual article would default. I think it would be a no vote. That would not be in the budget. We'll confirm that.
Right. And, and that's what I'm implying, is that I would just want to make sure that we understand what the implication would be if it is broken out in greater detail, what it will mean if it is a situation where it's a nay.
The charter wording says if the council fails to adopt a budget, the default budget is the manager's proposed budget. But if they adopted a budget that just didn't have pieces in it, that's adopting a budget, so.
True.
Yeah. That's my guess. We'll, we'll confirm that in a little more detail and get back to them before we set that adoption language.
I'll just point out that our next council meeting on February 28th is our first look at the capital budget for the upcoming year.
We could probably have an answer to that question on the 28th at that workshop before the capital presentation.
Can I offer something to Counsel Fornier?
Sure.
And I look forward to hearing back the answers to the questions that were just posed. But for Counsel Fornier, there's always the option, and I'm happy to work with you if it's a meeting that I'm chairing, to do individual amendments, either for or against any of the line items in the budget. Obviously, we can't vote on the entire budget, line item by line item, but happy to break it up in whatever way makes most sense. But, but regardless of that, there's always the option to say, here's something I want to propose adding to the budget. Here's something in the budget I don't want, and we can take a vote on that individually. For anything that any of the counselors want to bring up, I'm happy to facilitate that.
And I know historically, we've done that prior to the actual adoption date. Like usually, one of the last meetings before the physical adoption of the budget, past councils have kind of taken loose votes to see where things stand, to know where there's further work needed, so that when we get to the physical adoption, it, it can be a yea or, you know, all nay. Hopefully not, but an all yea situation.
All right. Any other comments or questions for our Finance Director? Thanks, Jessica.
Yeah.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the budget schedule for FY 24. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Next item is item number 21-23, to consider action relative to dispatch and animal control agreement with the town of Brunswick. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered and the be it further ordered?
Be it ordered that the dispatch and animal control agreement with the town of Brunswick be approved. Be it further ordered that the town manager be authorized to execute said agreements on behalf of the town.
Second.
All right. Mr. Manager, we had a conversation about this at our last meeting, and now we have the action item in front of us. Anything to add or highlight for us?
Nope, but we talked with Brunswick regarding, there was a question that was raised last year, but, or last year, gee, it feels like last year, last meeting about consultation with both police and fire. That was the one change. I'm told that has been happening for the past few hires, and they are perfectly comfortable with that.
Is it in the agreement?
Uh, yes. You're going to have to give me a second, though. Yes, it's in, they agreed to put it in the agreement, and-
That's all I need to know. Thank you.
I'm going to confirm that before I speak out loud, because I didn't put a z on it. They edited it and sent it back. Yep, so 1C of the inter-local cooperation agreement, so page one of that, which is like page four of that item. During the term of this agreement, Brunswick will consult with the Freeport Police Chief and Fire Chief on all proposed hires for Brunswick. So they felt that was current practice, so had absolutely no issue with it.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Any other comments about this action for dispatch and animal control? Share. It moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Just folks, to remind you, we had talked about bringing up the further discussion of the Hedgehog Mountain Management Plan at this meeting, and we'll actually be tabling that until February 28th. So if, I just taking note of the time here, if you're waiting around for a conversation or participating in that, we're anticipating that we'll be tabling that action until February 28th.
Do you want to, you could take that, just with a simple majority vote, you could take it out of order if you, people are not comfortable until that's done, the tabling motion. That's only a three-second vote, probably.
Sure. Maybe just to confirm for the crowd that we're going to table, item number 09-23, which is further discussion on adopting the Hedgehog Mountain Conservation Plan. There's ongoing discussions and more data gathering that's happening, so we're not going to take it up this evening. Do we need an amendment to the agenda?
Just a majority vote to take an item out of order, and then you could-
Can we, can we get a vote to take that out of order so that we can officially table that?
The motion to take the town, the Hedgehog Mountain Management Plan and move it to the 28th, February 20th, the town council meeting.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of taking that item and tabling it?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will take up further discussion of the Hedgehog Mountain Management Plan at our meeting on February 28th, in case anybody's waiting around for that. We have lots more exciting stuff coming here with our town charters and our vision plan. Counselor Daniele.
Can I just point out that we're tabling it because the Conserv- Conservation Commission is going to take it up at their next meeting, which was scheduled to be the 14th, and they're going to move probably until the 21st. So if you're interested in following along, Conservation Commission next.
Thank you.
Thank you for, Counselor Daniele's also been shepherding it behind the scenes to try to do all the things the council asks to get people in the rooms talking with each other. So thank you, Jake. I've been watching that.
All right. Our penultimate action item this evening is item number 22-23, to consider action relative to 2023 public peddler permit renewals. Practice saying that. Counselor Fornier, could you please read the be it ordered?
Certainly. Be it ordered that the following public peddlers' renewals be approved pending receipt of all required documentations. Dale's Baker of, is it Ikeen? Pardon me? Yep. Oh, excuse me, and Live Food Cart. Lily's Food Cart, excuse me. Thank you.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any other conversation? We have the applications in our package. Peter or Chris, any reason why we should have a conversation, anything to bring up?
We actually have additional spots. Chris, are there, you want to top down?
So we have-
We have more spots than are filled, so.
We have four spots. These are the, the two renewals, two renewals that we had from last year. The four spots are behind Nathan and I, and then the train station and out front here in Town Hall. But right now, we only have the two applicants.
Great. Thank you. So two applicants for, up to four of the spots available. Any reason to have further conversation? We're ready to take the vote to grant those permit renewals. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. Congratulations to those public peddler renewal permits. Still like saying that. All right. Our last action item on the agenda this evening is item number 23-23. Counselor Lawrence, could you please read the be it resolved?
Sure.
Get it on the floor.
Be it resolved that the list of proposed projects from the Freeport Downtown Visioning Plan be designated as priority projects for calendar year 2023.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This is the heart of our meeting this evening. We have a number of members of the public. Welcome again. This is a gigantic milestone in the execution of our downtown vision plan, started almost two years ago. And I just want to thank the Chair, Dan Pilch, and the team of, of staff that have gotten us, gotten us to this point, to present these charters for conversation. Dan, I'll let you go through what the sequence is going to be here, so that we can tee these up for conversation and presentation. The effort of the vote, as we just read, is to adopt these as, as priority projects for our upcoming calendar year. So anyway, go ahead, Dan. You want to put a little context on it?
I assume that somewhere in the room, Mary's setting up a laptop to be projected, or I can share my screen from here, either way.
Share your-
She just asked me that question. I've given you shared, Dan. So if you want someone else to do it, we'd have to scramble.
Yep, that's fine. I can share from here. It's easy. I got it all up and ready to go. So just by way of introduction, they, we have been flying this plane of downtown vision implementation, which is a very complex process, as we were reminded this morning by Russ from the principal group. He said downtowns are complex and complicated organisms, and they're, moving them forward is not usually done in a straight line. And we are going to be called to be pushing on many different directions at the same time. The plane we're flying is something we're building as we're flying it. So I think we have a really good process. I think we've done a lot of really good work, together with a lot of our community members. But I'm not presenting anything that's claiming to be perfection tonight. I'm claiming progress. We have a presentation that Mary's going to walk us through. Mary deserves a ton of the credit for getting us to where we are as well. She'll walk us through sort of the, the background, the introduction, how we got to where we are. I'll come back towards the end of the presentation to help guide the, the conversation and what sort of the parameters are, and what I think we're doing tonight, and how I think that conversation might go. I'm disappointed I can't be there in person. I was planning on it. I'm recovering from COVID and was mostly, not contagious, but tested positive, so out of an abundance of caution, I'm staying home tonight. But with that, let me get this presentation queued up, and I'll teed over to Mary, and then I'll, I'll join you again in a minute or two.
Thank you. And thank you, thank you, council, and thank you all of the members of the community who are here tonight to bring these things to you. It's very encouraging, after so many years of planning, to have so many community members come forward and say, yep, I'll lead a project. So very exciting night. So the work of implementing, you know, as we talked to Russ this morning, he reminded us that if you're not feeling anxious right now about being in the middle of implementing, and trying to remember the vision and get things implemented and work through the approvals, he said you're unlike any other project we've ever worked with. He said this is just normal, that implementing is messy, and as you start to put down the actual actions of what are going to happen, and the plans and the money, it gets messy. But his coaching to us was persevere, because this is where it gets good. This is where we get to implement the things that we said that we wanted in the plan. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, thank you. As a reminder, when we started doing this whole visioning, we knew we needed change. We were looking at the downtown area. There were vacancies. We had articles in the newspaper about how it was the highest vacancy rate that we had had in 10 years. There was a lot of really bad news about us. And so we came to you and said, we want to bring in someone to help us go through a vision of what we can be in the future. So go next. So we started by bringing in the principal group. We all remember them. And we started with a set of goals about what we as a community, as a community wanted out of this process planning. And we said we wanted a shared future vision. We wanted a lot of inclusiveness from the community, from businesses, from kids, from elders. We wanted people to be included in it. We wanted it actionable. We didn't have another, want another plan that was going to sit on the shelf, and we would pull it out 10 years later and say, wow, that was cool. We didn't do it. We also wanted it to be adaptable, because it's meant to be implemented over time. It's not going to happen immediately, and we need it to adapt with the times. And we wanted to build community around it. We knew that, what is it they're saying, many hands make a big job small. You need the community to help get these things done. Go ahead, Dan. And so Freeport really came together. Oh my word. We had hundreds and hundreds of people who attended for surveys, for meetings, for interviews, for input. Literally, there are thousands and thousands of data points, of which Principal summarized down. So the community really came together. And what Principal will remind us of is we had more community involvement than many, many towns do. So it was great. Go ahead, next one. So here we are. So in May of '22, not quite a year ago, Principal brought to us that outline for what I call short and medium plan, which is two to 10 years. This is not necessarily immediately. This is over a 10-year plan, so we can't do it all right away. But it was intended to be a plan that could help us transform downtown the way we wanted it. Go ahead and hit return, please, Dan. And what that presented to us was a vision that is a puzzle piece of three areas. It has seven guiding principles that kind of tell us what we want it to be like. We have 12 catalyst sites. They're important sites that Principal keeps reminding us. If you don't do something about those sites, you're never going to get the kind of change that you want. And then there were 69 goals and actions that could be goals and actions that lined up, that lined those, the principles into place, and helped us get the catalyst sites done. So this was a big document that came around. Go next. And these are three pieces of a big puzzle. So what have we been doing? Well, in the first place, we began implementing right away. As the vision plan was going along, we did pop-ups on the street. We put pocket parks on the street. We put sidewalks out. We cleaned up. So we've been trying to do implementations as we go along, because this Principal reminds us, do something, keep doing something, because as you do something, you gain momentum, you gain attention, and you get community buy-in to, to kind of where you're going. So try to keep momentum going. But now we're at this place where now we've got these groups who are coming to you with big projects of things that they want to do. So it's like we're filling in, let's do some little trials, but now here's some bigger projects. Go ahead, Dan. So we have this community that we engaged, that Dan had a great idea. He said, let's bring the community together. Let's bring, have a big old meeting. Let's bring a whole bunch of people to it and see what they say. And you know, for 50-person meetings to bring things together, I thought Dan was crazy. But guess what? He was really smart, because this has worked so well. Because the community had, I didn't think anybody was going to come, and 50 people come. We didn't think anybody was going to come to the community hall. And remember how many people were down there? Oh my God. We thought there were going to be 10, and I think there were, what, 120 there at any point. So the community really cares about this. So here's your implementation task force team. Go ahead, next. So this task force team, and please, a lot of members are in this crowd, a lot of members are online. We really need to say thank you. These guys have done a lot of work in the last months. And now they're holding their hands up and saying, I will own a project and make it happen, which is just amazing to have a community that's doing that. So it's a thank you to this community task force. Go next. So this is what they tried to do, to take all of those projects and goals and whatever, and then to narrow it down into this funnel, which we talked about at the very beginning of the implementation, and narrowed it down into a set of recommendations that are based upon their capacity, what they believe needs to be done first, the action items that need to be put in place to sort of make the puzzle fall together. And it was task force recommendations along with public input, board input, and we had a lot of discussions around these. Next. Okay. So projects can happen in a lot of ways. We had a lot of projects that came through that the task force. We also had a new project that has come in. That'll be here tonight as well. But there's also other projects that come to you as a council that don't necessarily go through us. You're seeing some of them now. go through us, you're seeing some of them now. So, this is just, again, one piece of the puzzle, but it's a big piece of the puzzle with a lot of community members involved. So, tonight, go ahead, Dan. Tonight, you're going to see, and we're, oh, so, on this task force, we focused on 12-plus-one projects for advancing that were nine goals. It's not all of them, it's a subset of them, because these are the ones that the task force believes we should take on first. We can't do all this immediately. It's too expensive, it's too much resources, it's too much. But we want to try to do the things that make a difference. So, tonight, go ahead. So, tonight, we'll be going through these other project recommendations, and Dan's going to talk to you about how we're going to try to accomplish this tonight. And next, these project recommendations, the same list we saw you last time, are, these are the supporting goals that they support. So, continue. So, what you have in your packets are a set of project charters that were completed by each of the teams. These will help to outline the projects themselves and help to, it helped us as a team talk about what are the resource requirements, what are the step requirements, what are the interactions with one another. The real value of having this team work together was that we could see where things overlapped or things didn't overlap, or see where there were opportunities. Okay, so, Dan, I'm going to give it to you.
All right. Thanks, Mary. Thanks for that intro, that's awesome. So, we've got a lot of things we needed to do. The charters were a method we thought would be useful. Think of a charter as a project application. It's a way to draw a box around a project and say what it is and what it isn't, and who's involved. The document is sort of important, but what's more important is the discussion that needed to happen in order to get to the point where we have a document that people agree on. So, that discussion is, who else needs to be at the table? What's out of scope? What, how big is this project? How do we know when it's done? What kind of budget are we asking for? So, those are all discussions that we had 12-plus times in order to get to the point where we are tonight, where you have 30 pages of charters in your packet or on the website if you're at home. So, not all projects that we do in town need to have a charter. So, if you have a project that you're thinking about, that's not one of the ones that we're going to review tonight, and you say, geez, I'd really love to see something happen in town, don't feel like you need to create a charter, otherwise it'll never happen. If you find it to be a useful document, sure, we'll help you, we'll help you create one. It's just a mechanism that we're using to help guide our work in our downtown task force. That's all a charter is. What I propose we do tonight is that a lot of these community leaders have put a lot of work into getting where we are, including work into the charters. I'd like for each of them to be able to get their three minutes, unfortunately, is probably all we have, to give you an overview of the project. And I'd ask that the council hold questions while they do their overview, so that we can get through all of these 12-plus projects, because that alone is going to take 45 minutes or so, even if we keep it to three minutes each. And I want everybody to kind of have that fresh mindset that tends to dwindle as we get late into the evening. So, this way, everyone will get a chance to present. As they present, take notes, think of what questions you want to ask, and think of what you want to come back to. After we're done presenting all the projects, I think we'll have a Q and A session where the council will get a chance to say, hey, go back to project number three, I have a question about why the budget is this, or why you're not covering that. So, we'll have that Q and A session. After we're done with the Q and A session, which I propose we should do project by project, so we don't dance all around, but we say, so who's got questions on project number one, who's got questions on project number two? Once we're done with that Q and A, I think the right way to move forward is to say, for each of the projects before you, you can either say, it's awesome, we're going to accept it as is, March 4th and continue on with the project, or you could say, well, I like the project, but I really want it to have a bigger scope or a smaller scope, I want you to bring these other people to the table, so you can change it. You can accept it as is, you can ask for it to be changed, or you could postpone it and say, you know what, not right now. It's a good project, we should keep it in the backlog, but we don't think we're going to be able to tackle it this year because of whatever budget reasons or capacity reasons. If you do want to change it, you know, be specific about what you'd like to see changed, the scope, budget, and stakeholders. And then regarding budget, which is probably going to be a focus later on tonight, we previously asked, are these the right projects? Are they good enough projects for us to move forward with? We asked you that question in December, and we got the consensus unanimously that says, yeah, these are good projects. We'd like you to move forward and put more thought behind them, and we came up with some budget requests tonight. If we, if you vote to accept the project as is, it doesn't mean that you're voting on a final budget, because we don't do that as a council at this point in the year. What I'm suggesting is, if you vote to support a project that's going to cost $5,000, then we're saying to Jessica and Peter, the council wants you to put this $5,000 in your proposed budget. When we get to actually voting on the budget later on in the year, May, June, that's when we see the total number of everything that we're doing as a town, and that's when we get a sense of what the tax impact will be. We may decide at that point to say, that project we voted yes on back in February, we now don't think we can afford to do. So, there is an option to kind of cancel projects or pull them back, but tonight, if you like a project, if you want to do it, if you want to throw the weight of the council behind it, and you think that the budget is reasonable, then we expect that that support would continue as we go through the rest of budgeting. So, I know it's a little bit of a dance we're doing, but I think that's just sort of what we have to do with the way we do our budget. We don't budget downtown projects, approve them, budget them, and allocate them or appropriate them, and then move on to the rest of the town budget and appropriate that. We have one town budget, and this is the way of getting things into that budget. What I hope we can avoid tonight is the mechanism we use to fund it, because there are a lot of different sources we have ultimately in our budget. We have tax revenues, we have, you know, TIF funds, we have, we could bond things, we could borrow money. So, a lot of different ways we could do things. That's a can of worms that we can discuss, I think, when we look at the budget as a whole. We did try and pull out, here's some instances where we think it's going to be not our money that we propose to spend, it's grant money, right? So, we called those out in particular. But if it's town money, it could come from a few different buckets, and we can decide that another night. Does that process make sense? Are there any questions on the process before I turn back to Mary for the last slide?
Sounds good. Thanks very much for that very specific structure, Dan. I think that's going to help us move through this this evening.
Okay. And I'm happy to kind of help facilitate remotely if I can, but I tried to lay it all out so that you guys can do that. And I think Mary had one more slide that I think is the final one, just to walk us through before we dive into the overviews of each project.
Yeah, and this is really just a reminder that these projects are the first ones up, but more requests for projects will come. As we start to look at, and they should, that's what we want it to be, as we start to look at the catalyst sites, as we start to go back to the other goals that we didn't come, more project requests will come into us. And so, becoming good at this process, becoming good at how we do this, will help us as we go along, because there's going to be more. We've got a lot of success in gear right now. We have housing projects, we have three really large land acquisitions that have occurred. There's a lot of wonderful things that are coming out of the vision, and it's going to drive more, so. All right. So, let's get to the presentations themselves. So, there is a little timer up there, and probably the hardest thing any of these folks are going to do is to do their project for you in three minutes, because there's a lot of passion behind each one of them. Yes?
Do you have any screen needs for these, or are they all going to be done? I'm trying to figure out how to do the Zoom right here.
You all have a packet of all of these for you, and so I think we'll just have you refer to what's in your packet. Each person is, I'm going to try to talk about what page number they're on, we're going to take them slightly out of order from what you have in your packet, we'll try to give you the packet numbers, but I'd ask you to refer to these, because again, please, what we're trying to do is have each person do a three-minute presentation, you record all of your questions, and then we'll come back to the questions at the end. So, yes, please, I'm going to ask Peter to have our little timer on.
I don't have a bell to really be annoying.
Or a bell to be annoying, annoying, or you can do something else, yeah. Okay, are we ready? So, the first grouping that we're going to have, thank you, Valley, come on up. So, Valley is going to go through three of the vision charters, which are on page 22, 24, and 20. Okay. So, Valley, introduce yourself, you're up.
I'm Valley Stoverling. I'm the co-chair of the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board, and I am presenting on behalf of my board three charters. The first one is on page 20, and it's the one that relates to the emergency management plan and the climate action plan. So, for the emergency management plan, this is something that Chief Conley has been working with the community on. He has already collected a lot of information. This part of the charter is almost completed already, and what he has done is basically collected information from the community and is updating the emergency management plan. The next plan is the climate action plan, and that is the one.
Talk louder? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay.
The next one is the climate action plan. This is one the Freeport Sustainability Board has been working on in conjunction with GP Cog. We have hired them. Thank you so much for providing some of the funds to pay GP Cog to conduct this project. Our board has contributed money to. This happened last year, that we funded GP Cog, hired them, we're collaborating with them right now. We're in the middle of assessing the vulnerabilities for the town of Freeport in terms of climate change, storm surge, anything that has to do with raising sea level. We will be presenting to the community in April with the assistance of GP Cog, the list of vulnerabilities, and we will also have an opportunity for the public at that time to come and corroborate what has been found based on the modeling that GP Cog is providing to us, what they assess as being vulnerable areas. Alongside that presentation, there'll be a list of mitigation strategies that we can use in this town to make our town more resilient. So, that is the timeline. Eventually, we will have more workshops, more opportunities for feedback, and then by fall of this year, we will have a finished, completed climate action plan to bring forth to the council for approval. So, that's that charter on page 20. The next one that I'm presenting is page 22, and this is electric vehicle charging.
Speak up a little, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. I'm going to try, I'm really not very good at projecting, but I'll try to scream, okay?
Maybe I should move down.
Okay. The next one is on page 22, is the EV charging stations at municipal facilities. This is something that we have been working on with surrounding communities, basically getting an education on what are the different criteria that we need to consider to move forth with this project. So, what we're doing now is inventorying town properties to see which are the ones that would be most suitable for EV charging stations. This project will also require that we identify traffic and parking patterns, so that we know which are the hotspots in town and where the EV chargers would be best put to use. We also will identify and make a list of all the existing EV charging facilities in town, so we don't duplicate, and we will also generate a table of grants or funding opportunities for the EV chargers. So far, we know that Efficiency Main in this month of February is opening a round of funding for municipalities in Cumberland and York Counties, so this is very timely. Hopefully, we will have an application in our hands soon, and we will move forth if you agree that this is worthwhile to pursue. The areas that we have initially identified as being worthy of consideration are the town hall, the train station, and the library. So, those will be the first ones that will be considered for municipal EV charging facilities. The third charter that I'm presenting is on page 24, and it's also on EV charging stations, but this will be for private developments. So, this will be coming in the form of a proposed ordinance for the council eventually to consider. It would be based on other EV ordinances that have been approved in the area, general area where we are. South Portland, Portland have EV ordinances that have been adopted in the last couple of years. So, what we will be doing is generating an inventory of the existing EV chargers in Freeport, all the ones, location and the type of charger that already exist, and we will generate information on the potential costs for developers. And then we would come to you with a list of criteria to consider in terms of what kind of charger, what level of charging, how many per parking, for example, would be suitable. And also, we would be asking you to consider the question of whether the chargers need to be installed, or whether the sites need to be prepped for future installation of EV chargers. Based on our research, it costs 10 times more to construct a parking lot without getting all the hardware underneath the pavement, and then having to rip it up to put an EV charger after the fact. So, that's an important point to consider. There will also be research, research on grants that would be available, and we know already that there will be $19 million in EV charging infrastructure investment over the next five years. GP Cog is having a workshop in April that we will attend, so hopefully, we will learn more about cost analysis of what this would be incurring in calls for developers, but also what kind of assistance we can generate from federal and state grants. So, that's it for me, and thank you so much.
Thanks, Farley.
Hi, folks. My name is Sam Kapala. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'm going to present two charters here, I believe they are numbers 2.4 and 2.5. The first one is on page one of the packet. And the first one is zoning ordinance updates. So, I'm sure there's plenty of thoughts about the number of updates that could potentially happen to our zoning ordinance, but for the sake of trying to stay focused here, we are focusing on the design review ordinance in this charter, and that's kind of phase one of this project. We certainly recognize that this project will require lots of coordination between different, different boards and committees. There's lots of, lots of language out there that could be updated to more closely align with the vision plan, but really, the interest of this charter is to update the design review ordinance and with, specifically with an eye toward clarifying vague submission requirements, replacing existing subjective standards with new objective requirements to better promote the character and architectural standards that we've identified in the downtown vision. And we want to see lots of pictorial and graphic sorts of standards, so we try to remove as much subjectivity as we can to hopefully provide better clarity for developers and, you know, and people in the town who can weigh in on these standards, and hopefully we all have a better sense of what we're going to get. Another thing we're trying to take into account in this is consideration for accessibility and sustainability going forward, where we don't currently have, you know, have language in the design review ordinances that take sustainability and accessibility into account, and we'd like to, you know, do a better job at taking, taking a crack at that. And we also definitely want to make sure that the updates clearly address the need for multifamily housing in town, which is not, not something that is clearly addressed right now. I think we have, we've seen with a couple of projects that are currently working their way through the permitting process in town, you know, that they are moving through under existing regulations. I think a lot of people in town would like to see the regulations updated to better reflect where we want to see the town go. So, I think this has been a priority, the good news, I guess, is it's been a priority of the Planning Board and the Project Review Board for quite some time now, so we do have a little bit of a jump on this. We already have some funding, which I know is always great news. So, as part of this charter, we are actually not requesting any funding. There's $40,000 that's already allocated to the project, there's an RFP that is maybe not quite done, but pretty darn close, and the project will be moving forward relatively quickly. We hope to have it, this first phase completed in 2023, which is good news, I think, and hopefully, something that we can accomplish. Future phases will definitely address, there's a whole slew of other, you know, other ordinances. Like I said, you know, we could more specifically tailor future updates to the catalyst sites that have been identified in town, like, you know, the intersection of Main and Bow Streets, other areas that are not coming to mind right now, but they're, you know, the Bean Campus, I'm sure they have lots of, well, they've announced that they have lots of plans. So, I think there's going to be, you know, it's going to be a big lift to update. So I think there's going to be, you know, it's going to be a big lift to update these ordinances, and this is hopefully going to be a good start. Any questions?
Questions later.
Questions later, sorry.
Sorry.
Well, moving right along then. So on page four, I believe, of your packet is the second charter I'm going to go over, which is streamlining the permitting process. This is another one that it will surprise no one to learn that this could be as big a project as we want to make it. I think there is a lot of work to be done here. I think it is fair, if hard, to say that Freeport does have a little bit of a reputation that a lot of people have heard about. I know anecdotally that as a place that can be challenging to come in and understand the permitting process and have a clear path to move through the permitting process. That's definitely something we want to address. As part of the initial round here, we are looking at three existing ordinances, overhauls, some sort of combination of overhaul and update to the designer view ordinance, which we've already talked about, the subdivision ordinance, and Section 602, which is site plan review of the zoning ordinance. I think that it's a start. You know, I think, like I said, there's lots more work that could be done, but that is definitely something that we want to start with as quickly as possible. A big part of this will be working with some other folks in town. I believe FEDC has offered to help with process mapping, to clarify the process for both the town and applicants so that everybody has a much clearer idea of the steps to work through a project and what needs to be done when. I think the clarification of the design review guidelines to remove as much subjectivity as possible and try to guide or try to put into more objective standards the goals of the vision or the, you know, the architectural standards and everything that we've sort of learned from the visioning process that people want to see in town. I think that's going to be a big part of this, and I think that another thing that I personally hope to see is a better addressing of existing properties and the permitting considerations that are here for existing properties and that we don't only focus on new, you know, empty parcels and new construction. I think there's a lot of work to be done. At this point, we're not really, you know, looking for budget allocations. I think we're hoping to do most of it in-house, but I think, you know, going back to what I said a minute ago, this project is one that could easily morph into a big overhaul, and I am very wary of staff resources at this extremely busy time where we're implementing the vision plan. We are, we have a comp plan coming up. As everybody knows, there are going to be lots of demands on staff time, and I think that engaging some consultants to take on some of this in the future could be advantageous. So that's just sort of a footnote for the future. And then, since I mentioned the comp plan, I think it is also important to note that the future phase of this, aside from updating the three ordinances that I just mentioned, once the comp plan is done, we are definitely going to want to go back and make sure that all of the permitting process is in harmony with the new comprehensive plan, which, you know, may sort of change things a little bit or guide our future decisions. So I know I'm out of time. Thank you very much.
You can keep going because Voli did hers in halftime, so you can actually have six minutes.
Oh, there we go. Yeah.
Thank you.
You were close.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam.
Nora? Your time is running.
I'm just glad you were down there. I had no idea where you got off to. I was looking around the room saying, do we need to wait for Ed to come back?
Oh, Ed, where's your notes?
I'm helping.
Levity, levity.
Mary, I can get down. So my name is Ed Bradley. I'm councillor from District Two. I'm also chair of the Sewer Committee. Last November, the council created the Sewer Committee, basically to address the disincentives that connective fees created for implementing the downtown vision plan. They created the committee. We appointed a group of, you know, really experienced, really smart, and really hardworking people, and they met several times, knowing that they had a six-month deadline to come up with recommendations to the council. We began with a work on trying to understand what's in the current sewer district plans for renovating and upgrading a sewer plant down on the project. We worked with their representatives from Woodard and Curran, and we went through the project in detail. We did that basically to understand the scope of the work and also to understand the cost. And what we found out was that they had made an application to USDA Rural Development for $19 million. And the reasons for that were essentially $17 million to upgrade pump stations and to renovate the plant itself in the location, and also another $2 million to install ultraviolet purification for the discharge waters that were entering into our pristine waters in the bay. There were other projects that were not included in that, most notably the force mains that are going to be required sooner or later from Route One South up and then from downtown down to get the waters back into the system. The sewer, the application was going to become, it has been made, they expect it to be granted. There's some discussion about how much will be granted and how much of it will be loaned. And they expect that this application when granted will add roughly $600,000 to their operating expenses annually for debt service, essentially. So they did a rate increase in anticipation of that increased user fee rates, and they did a 13% one-time increase and 10 5% increases over the next 10 years. Our committee did some analysis of that on rates, and we made it, we concluded basically that while that increase is affordable, it's a substantial increase for the current users of the system. The sewer district did not anticipate increasing connection fees, but they need connection fees because of what they use connection fees for. The problem that we focused on was to subsidize and create reserve accounts for emergencies and unexpected projects that occur to them on a regular basis. So based on these discussions, our focus expanded or narrowed, depending on how you look at it, from connection fees alone to all the other benefits that the sewer district provides the town. And we began to consider ways in which the town and the sewer district could work together to make the sewer district expenses and service of their debt more palatable. Yeah. Hang on, baby. It took a long time to get here. So to look at the major benefits that the sewer district provides the entire town, and I don't need to go through them in detail, but you all know what they are. They're basically clean water in the harbor all through the town, recreational opportunities in the harbor, clamming, all of the things that we do in this community, that brand us, make us who we are, depend on the sewer district. It's not just about connection fees. So we made three recommendations to the council. They're in our charter. I'll just say what they are quickly. One is from a connection fee perspective. Connection fees are a disincentive to downtown redevelopment and reenforcement, but what we should do, we think, is to create a fund, a short-term fund, roughly $100,000, to subsidize qualified projects. Not all projects need subsidy for connection fees. Lots of them have plenty of money in their rentals, whatever their structures are, but some of them, real public benefit, are going to be discouraged by the amount of the connection fees. I've been involved in meeting House Arts. It was discouraged by its connection fees. There will be others in the same thing, including affordable housing projects that we think we want to encourage. Secondly, we think it's premature for the town and the district to share in management and operating and budgeting process. We don't have enough experience together. There's not enough shared experience between us, but we think it is time for the two entities to start cooperating and collaborating on important things that they can do together to reduce the amount of debt service for the sewer district and also to help the town. So we were proposing two things. One, CIP planning that allows the district and the town to plan for their future projects in coordination with one another, to achieve efficiencies and to save money for both parties and to achieve benefits for the town. And secondly, that we apply for grants that the town could attract, but the sewer district can't. And so for that, we're asking for $5,000 to hire Woodard and Curran, who knows these projects well, knows CIP planning, knows the sewer district, and use that $5,000, which will be matched by the sewer district, to hire them to begin that process of CIP planning and also to do the CIP planning for us.
Do you articulate CIP yet? Not everybody knows what CIP.
Capital Improvement Planning.
Thank you.
So we do that anyway. They do it anyway, but we just don't do it together. Now we want to do it together. We're going to use Woodard and Curran if you approve. The other thing is that there are a couple other numbers in here. The $100,000 that I mentioned is not money that we have to appropriate. It's just money we have to say we're willing to use if an appropriate project comes along. The decision about whether to do that will be ours to make as a councillor or as a town later on when the project appears, if it has enough of a public benefit and it needs subsidy. The second thing is that there are matching parts to these grants that we've looked at. One is for the earmark process, and the other is for, is from the infrastructure bill that the state has. And there's roughly $500,000 that would be required to match those grants if we got them, but you don't have to come up with that or even decide whether or not you want to put that in until you know whether you like the grant and you want the grant substance to be funded and if you get the grant. So, and also, at that moment, for the first time, we would expect there would be a conversation between the sewer district and the town about conditions for providing that match. So now, we're not saying go into this and create any sort of, John asked in the beginning, why is it appropriate for the town taxpayer to be subsidizing the sewer district? Well, maybe it isn't particularly with any grant match, but we can have that discussion at that time as opposed to this time. So we're kicking that issue down the road in order to have that at a time when it's really important to have it, when there's real money on the table. So that's it. This charter will initiate a course of collaboration, benefit the town, the sewer district, and users and town residents. The shared experience will put in motion a process that will lead to much more significant cooperation and benefits for the town and the sewer district in the future. I'd like to recognize and thank all the members of the Sewer District Committee. They were really hardworking. They worked on time, got things done, especially, though, to Brent Bridges of Woodard and Curran, Lee Eras, the executive director of the Sewer District, who is amazing in terms of his cooperation and his transparency, and Brett Richardson, our FEDC member, who worked tirelessly with communication and helped, not helped, he drafted the charter that's in front of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Hello, everybody. Brett Richardson, Executive Director of the Freeport Economic Development Corporation. Parking is on the topic that I'm going to address tonight.
Page nine.
On page nine. Working with Sam Capala from the planning board, as well as Caroline, our planning director. And the Downtown Vision spends a lot of time talking about parking and the need to look at parking, the fact that we have in our downtown surplus parking and that that parking could be better utilized for infill residential development. The planning board took up this topic in the fall, made a recommendation to town council to lower the required parking spaces per unit for residential development downtown. That good change was made. The council approved that change, but over the course of the dialogue around that proposed change, it became clear that different members of the public, different property owners, and different policymakers that sit on that dais have concerns going forward that as more of that surface parking is converted to residential, that we may run into a parking shortage. And parking has been an important strategy in Freeport, the ability to share parking, the ability for visitors to park once, and to be able to access the downtown without moving, having to move their car. That's an asset and a competitive advantage that the community would like to maintain. And so as we look to do infill development, it's important to be very careful that we don't go too fast or too far and drive ourselves into a parking shortage. So this study really is to look at that process of build-out, and as surface parking is converted to residential, where is it tipping point where we start to run into shortages? And then, as we get close to that, are there adaptation strategies such as creating more on-street parking, taking advantage of space that we have, looking at investing to create more parking supply? And we believe that we have a grant from GP Cog to support this, so the ask from council was relatively minimal, a small amount of matching funds, and then some staff time, which largely I'm happy to contribute to move this forward. It's important to downtown development. It's a priority for the FEDC board, and we feel like this project will be good and move us forward.
Thank you for your time tonight. Hopefully, you've had time to review the charter. Kelly Edwards and I are heading up this charter. And by way of introduction, my name is Jay Paulus. I am a board member with Visit Freeport for over 10 years, and I own the British store here in town of almost 40 years, and my full-time job is a designer, architectural designer, doing wayfinding, which is why I'm here tonight as a stakeholder along with a lot of other people. So with over 30 years of experience, we've worked on projects all over the country, and our experience in designing signage for hospitals, colleges, campuses, towns, we've seen them all, big and small. We did Boden College. Again, the list is longer than I care to read at this point, but the point that I'd like to make is we all know that the town of Freeport needs signage badly. We use the term wayfinding pretty loosely, and wayfinding is simply a larger term, very much like a ladder and its rungs. The signs are the rungs, and the ladder is the actual wayfinding to get someone from point A to point B. It's a strategic and comprehensive process, but having years of doing this, one of our biggest challenges was doing the French Quarters in New Orleans, very complex city. Freeport is not that complex when it's broken down to, so I think it's an easy project just getting started, so everybody wants to know what it looks like, and that's where I come in. But there are a lot of stakeholders, and I would like to at least have the opportunity to work with all of them because we have to consider all aspects, all visitors, ADA, usage, visually impaired, pretty much, you know, visitors coming to town are, they drop out of the sky, so they're all here. So I'm proposing, I put in the document there, a very realistic fee for doing all of the design all the way through the bid documents. It's not implementing the actual signage itself. And we've done these projects, we did New Orleans in 24 months, so it can be done very quickly if need be. The involvement of many people is important for us, so we do that. So I think you may have lots of questions and so forth for afterwards, but I'm hoping that we can move this forward. It's something that's very well needed. Thank you.
Two minutes and 59 seconds. He sets the record for the best timing.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Page 16.
Oh, I have to do page 16 first. Okay. All right. I don't know if I can project. I'm going to try. So my name is Liz McDonald. I'm the chair of the Complete Streets Committee, and the first item I'm going to talk to you about is on page 16. It's the Lower Main Street transformation. This seeks, well, this has two parts. The first part is the Concord Brook Trail, which is a trail that kind of runs behind the businesses on Route One. The second part is we want to improve Route One as it looks now. It's the south entrance to the city, and we want people to be able to, you know, as they drive into downtown Freeport, like, enjoy what they're seeing and have a good experience. The complete streets part of all of this is that we're not just interested in the cars that are driving into the city. We want it to be a complete street for everybody, so that includes pedestrians, and that includes bicyclists, and that includes other modes of transportation, like, for instance, wheelchairs. So we're trying to make lower main So that includes pedestrians, and that includes bicyclists, and that includes other modes of transportation, like, for instance, wheelchairs. So we're trying to make Lower Main Street essentially a complete street. And that's page 16. And I can answer questions later about budget and stuff like that. So my other project is on page 14. This is the Mallet Drive Transformation Project. And we want to change Mallet Drive from just being, okay, how do you get from the freeway to, you know, Freeport Village? We want to turn that into almost an extension of Freeport Village. And again, we want it to be accessible for bicyclists, pedestrians, as well as people in their cars. We want to transform Mallet Drive into something that's more pleasant. We want traffic calming measures. We would like to have maybe some lighting. And I want to add that this is part of a bigger plan, right? So for 10 years at least, groups of people have been coming together trying to figure out how to take, you know, our lovely downtown Freeport and turn it into a hub that spreads out into the rest of Freeport that people can access using their bikes or walking. But it's a larger vision of trails that are connected. And transforming Mallet is part of that in that, whoa, we already have a grant to put in a multi-use path on Mallet. And then, beyond the grant that allows us to design that path, we want to turn it into, like I said, more of a complete street, almost a boulevard, if you will, an extension of downtown. But that is good for not just people coming off the freeway to come shopping, but for residents that live on either side of the town to come visit each other, for kids to, you know, go to Hunter Road Fields from the middle school. We really want Mallet Drive to serve our community completely, as well as visitors. And like I said, it is part of a bigger plan to make Freeport more connected. That's all I have.
Thank you, Liz. Sally? Page 18.
Hi, everyone. My name is Sally Walsh. I'm the Coordinator of the Freeport Accessibility Task Force. And when in there's a word "accessibility" in it, my name is next to it. But really, the people who work on this is the Conservation Trust, Conservation Committee, Adam Bliss, Town Engineer. But this is a part of the wayfinding, mapping, discovering Freeport picture. Because this was one of the goals that was put out on all the boards out there. Everybody wanted to take advantage of the natural aspects of Freeport on the outskirts. Well, if you get people to come into the town, you want them to go outside the town also. So the trails that are all over this town have no signage, no description, no ability to accommodate maybe the people who are coming in with their toddlers in a stroller, or the grandmother who has a broken hip or recovering from one. So there's a discussion going on, and there's actually plans afoot that the Conservation Trust Committee, in combination with the Conservation Committee, has contracted with Enoch Glidden, who is a young man in a wheelchair, who is the business of maintrailfinders.org. He's going to come in at the end of the month or early March and evaluate every trail in town to see how it could be made accessible, if possible. And we're selecting just a few trails that could be made accessible for everybody. So it can be infants all the way up to the grandparents. And it can be people who use wheelchairs. It can be people who are fully fine, but then have an injury and have to recover from it. So there's lots of uses for these. And so, the economic benefit for getting this and drawing people into town, according to the CDC, is 27% of the population in Maine has some form of a disability. And it can be temporary, or it can be permanent. So that's one of the reasons that we're looking at this, and we just hopefully will use it to advertise Freeport.
Thanks, Sally.
Suzanne.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Suzanne Watson. I'm the Executive Director of Meeting House Arts. I was here a few weeks ago, if you may remember. And I appreciate the chance to come back and talk to you again. You have a charter in your paperwork on page 28, which relates to arts and culture, and in particular, to Memorial Park and a potential infrastructure project pavilion. And I want to sort of... I'm happy to know this is kind of a messy process, and it's open for some consideration and renegotiation, if you will, because that particular charter that's in front of you, in large part, totally support. But I did have some small revisions to that charter, which I have here in front of me, and I'm happy to share with you. It includes a particular budget that I actually mentioned to you in my presentation to you a few weeks ago. So this was the charter and the budget that's included. And I'm happy to... there are two copies here. I'm happy to share with you to pass around, if you'd like, later. But I also want to mention that the revisioning plan really has three separate goals within the arts and cultural pocket, if you will. And the first goal, which I'll talk about specifically, is related to infrastructure. And that's the infrastructure that goes around a park, a pavilion, an amphitheater in front of Town Hall. These are what I consider infrastructure. The third major pocket or goal within the revisioning plan is related to events, which is the festivals. That's the music events. That's the outdoor performances that I think arts and culture, particularly to Meeting House Arts, is challenged or given the opportunity to do. The third goal is specific to public art. So that is not something we're addressing tonight, but it's something I hope to address in the future. That third goal being public art, that's sculpture in the town. It's crosswalks. It's bike racks, you know, all sorts of ideas around public art. But this particular charter we're talking about tonight is the infrastructure one. And I'm going to add a second charter to that, which I will also have to share with you as well. And that's specific to the second goal, the public events, the festivals. So the charter that... on the infrastructure one, related to the pavilion, we would propose to... and with Adam Bliss, our Town Engineer, we'll build a platform in Memorial Park before the summer, before... towards late spring, I think. There'll be a pavilion that... or a platform that will be movable so that we can actually build something in the park, try it out, if you will, have performances in Memorial Park. This would be Saturdays, Friday nights, and Saturdays. We're looking at six to eight particular performances. We actually have some that are lined up at this point in time. So we're very excited about that. But we'll be able to move this platform around, decide where exactly the best location will be in the park, long-term. But we'll also look at... and again, this is part of the budget that I'll share with you. We'll look at finding some of the retired architects that we have here in town to actually design a series or several different pavilion styles. And I did have that as part of my presentation. There was a whole slide on some possible ways for treatment of that. And then, we will actually have a public opportunity for input to those types of... the different designs that we will come up with, have public input. This was a really important... this was an important vote. I guess, if you talk about the revisioning plan, there was a fair number of citizens here who really wanted to see this infrastructure in Memorial Park. So that is the one that you have in front of you now, that charter. The second charter that I want to suggest we present in tandem, because they're one... they're really integral to each other. And that is the actual performances themselves, the musical events. And there's a separate budget for that. The first one, the infrastructure, the pavilion process of figuring out how we do that is $14,400. That is a small part of what it actually will cost us to do this. And yet, we will amplify, literally, that opportunity as we move forward. The second charter that I'm presenting, the second project with the musical events, is again, we've lined between six and eight different opportunities for concerts in Memorial Park. That budget is $4,350. We, at this point, have, in performance fees alone, amassed about $7,200. So this is a small... these were both really small budget requests, but ones that I think will be hugely justified long-term. And I'm happy to share these two. May I give these to you? There are two copies of each. That's all I have tonight, and I'll answer questions later. But I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Page 26.
Good evening. My name is Adam Bliss. I proudly serve as your Town Engineer. Page 26 in your packets is titled Parks Beautification and Maintenance. Councilor Pilch gets credit for advancing this project. And he and I got together and sort of dissected what this project... how this project was described in the Downtown Vision Plan. And the best way I could sum it up is as Parks Beautification and Maintenance. Now, first off, we have a Building and Grounds Department, and they do a tremendous job. So in no way is this suggests that they're not doing a good enough job. In fact, they do a great job, and they don't have enough resources to handle everything on their plate. We can also think of this project as a blank slate, as an opportunity to evaluate how to beautify our green spaces. So that begins with the development of a table and a map that shows where these green spaces are. Simple example would be the Hot Dog Park, which is behind Starbucks, right? It needs some help. It needs some attention. It's a great opportunity. Other examples might be the approaches on the shoulders as you come up Lower Main Street into the village. You know, maybe simple things like trimming, say, or, you know, just opportunities to beautify those entrances into town. So an inventory, a table, a map. We will look to other communities to see how... what plans they've developed in terms of parks maintenance. Scarborough is an example. They did an incredible community outreach to solicit input on what the residents wanted to see. And we do have a lot of wonderful resources. Let's see. So I could go on, but I won't. I think you get the picture. It's Parks Beautification and Maintenance.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Adam.
Last but not least, Kathy.
Hello, I'm Kathy Smith. And I'm here on behalf of a group that's talking about transportation for the town. I've been a summer resident since '66 and full-time since 12 years ago. And I've had some experience with this in Washington, DC. So I guess I'm on your list as resident experience. So that's where that's coming from. I'm here representing a committee that's gathered around a key piece that we see missing in the Downtown Vision, a local transportation system. Innovative, attractive, affordable, and fun. We see this as a way to rebuild and enrich downtown for residents and to help create a new brand that will bring more business to the village. In addition to Ed Bradley and myself, this committee includes Mary Davis and Tony Whitney of the Chamber. So Freeport has huge assets that most small towns in Maine do not have. We've got a national retailer with a brand that brings millions of visitors every year. We've got a train station that connects us to Boston and nine other towns. We have a charming village character with a growing number of local businesses. Major outdoor attractions that we've heard about tonight also that need to be accessible with walking trails. We have a state park, and we have a public farm on the ocean, miles away. Most people don't even know they're on the ocean when they come here. We have art, music, theater, and history in a new cultural center at Meeting House Arts we've heard from tonight, and also the Historical Society, where I'm involved. We have a nightclub. And we have exciting new attractions at the desert of Maine. We believe that connecting these assets with easy, affordable transportation within the village and beyond, which we've heard about too, can help rebuild and enrich a living downtown for local residents and bring more visitor dollars to a town as something for everyone. I think we do know about people who've wandered around town, not wanting to shop and not knowing where to go. The routes, the destinations, the business plan, the kind and number of vehicles, all need research. It's a little complicated. There are similar systems in nearby towns, such as Bath and Damroskata and Booth Bay, and we've taken a look at those already. They need more study. But for the moment, envision small, totally accessible vehicles, perhaps 16, 24 passengers, decorated in a pleasing way, appropriate for Freeport. There are likely two basic routes, one in the village and one to attractions out of town, all connected to hotels and the train and the breeze. Maybe it costs a dollar. Maybe it's hop-on, hop-off. We don't know. That needs research. What are the potential benefits? Park once, fewer cars on the street, a walking village, more customers for shops and attractions beyond the Village Center, the three blocks that most people walk, accessibility for those with disabilities, easy access without a car to the ocean, and hotels, B&amp;Bs can create weekend packages with varied activities for all seasons emphasizing no need for a car. Perhaps particularly in the winter, when people don't really want to drive, come here, businesses need visitors. It's easy, come for the weekend. There's so much to do, you have to stay overnight. Philadelphia had a campaign like that once with people in pajamas, saying, "Philadelphia's more fun if you stay over." I think that's true of Freeport as well. So here's another idea. The new residents that we're seeking in town, downtown, might be attracted by less or no need for a car, particularly if they work in another town on the train line. Living in the village, without a car, close to Portland, could become a town brand. So, in short... thanks for the extra minute. Freeport is seen anew as a place where a variety of offerings, an experience of high-quality shopping and more, music, art, history, theater, food, craft, beer, outdoor experiences and trips to the ocean. There's something for everyone, and a living downtown is back for those who live here. The vehicles themselves, in fact, could showcase that something new and exciting is happening in Freeport. We're looking for $10,000 in this charter to hire an experienced consultant to work out potential routes, destinations, vehicle options, and a full business plan. We think this would be a solid investment in Freeport downtown. And for implementation of the plan, we'd look toward grants and resources and support from the businesses and organizations that would be benefited by this service. We're glad to answer questions. Ed is here to answer questions, and Mary can as well. Thank you for your time. I have a fuller, longer piece that I'd love to leave with you.
Thank you so much. Wow, what do you think? Wow. Wow. That's right. Wow. And again, I want to thank everyone who's here tonight. You know, we're now... I'm going to give it to Dan to let you kind of talk about what's up. But just a massive amount of work. And I'm going to point out Adam and Caroline, too, because Adam and Caroline are working with all of us to try to get these projects in place. So thank you to all. And I hope this gives you a lot of fodder to think about what we're going to do next. So it is up to you now, Dan Micromaster.
Thank you, Mary. And thank you, everybody, for presenting and mostly keeping to the three minutes so we can get through everything. And thank you for all the work you've been putting in over the last 10 months to get us here. Like Mary said, a lot of people looked at me like I was crazy for saying this should be a community-led effort. And still thinks I'm crazy for saying that. But I think, you know, we've made a lot of progress, and tonight kind of highlights that. What you've seen are, you know, wide range from very small projects to pretty ambitious projects, like Mallet Drive. It's a subset of what we need to do. This is not the total menu of stuff that we want to do downtown. Once we get these projects kicked off and get some momentum going behind them, we want to lift our gaze back up and go back to the goals and say, "There are some bigger-picture things we'd really like to tackle." And now that we've kind of got our legs under us and figured out how to get stuff done, we're to come back with even more ambitious stuff that might take a little bit more than a year to do. So this is kind of, you know, chapter one. So this is kind of, you know, chapter one, or really chapter two or three, since we've done quite a bit already. So the temptation, I think, because all these presentations were so fantastic, and we've already whittled the projects down, and these are all the, you know, many of the good ones, it's probably easy to say, hey, you know, raise our hand, let's just move them all forward. Just to give you a sense of what it all adds up to, if we add up all the numbers and put some placeholders in, we're looking at about a $3.5 million investment in downtown for these projects, more or less in the next year, right? And a lot of that comes from a couple of significantly larger projects. So keep that in mind as you go through each of these. And one of the other things we're going to have to wrestle with is a lot of these projects take a significant amount of staff time from Adam, from Caroline, from Mary, from Brett. So I don't know that we could do everything that we want to do, and that's why I would encourage you to ask questions. So what I'll suggest we do is I'll put up this list up here on the board that has the page numbers in it. And if you want to go down, and maybe John can help me facilitate. If you want to start at the first one, just take questions for who's got questions around the Emergency Management Plan, Climate Resilience Plan, which is on project page 20. And then just go down until we've answered all the questions, and then we'll come back for voting. So John, would you mind walking us through, just facilitating the questions? Because you can see the room better than I can.
Yeah, but I can't see your screen. So I'm trying to move the Zoom window away from.
Yeah, yeah.
There we go. Thank you. Sure. Thanks, Dan. So our first, I mean, we can go through them one at a time, but I'm not sure if that's really the most efficient. There's a handful that, as you mentioned, Dan, are specific, big numbers. So maybe we can just focus on those and actually put those off to the side for just a moment so that maybe we can actually get some action on some of the other ones. The ones that are significant in cost would be Mallet Drive. And what are the others, Dan, that are?
Yeah, so the big ones are, Mallet Drive is the biggest. Next up would be Lower Main Street by sewer, and then EV charging. And I've got a spreadsheet that kind of gives you numbers, if that's helpful. I don't, it's distracting at this point, but I'm happy to share that.
Only because there's going to be a lot of questions about how we're going to come up with that money. That's why I'm asking maybe to put those off to the side for just a brief moment. And then maybe we can summarize the ones that are sort of like, you know, I don't know, pick a number. Less than $25,000, for instance, might be one place to start and see if there's some general consensus on that batch. Councilor Pillsbury, you had a question?
Is it easy to look at it in terms of staff time as well, like the heavy usage ones? Because the way I'd also like to look at it is, how many projects can we realistically do? Like if one of these projects takes almost 90% of, let's say, Adam's time, that means that we're not going to be able to do other projects that he's involved in, right? So like, that's kind of a gating issue. So there's, on the one hand, the physical cost to doing the project, but it's also the staff time. And I don't know how to balance the two of them to get the most bang for the buck.
I would agree with that, but I also think that we're not going to be able to really nail that down sitting up here tonight with this level of detail.
Yeah, I didn't know if, like, Dan had already thought of that. I didn't know if somebody had done some sort of calculation.
Yeah, there are estimates in each of the sheets. Unfortunately, we've got summaries here of the financial stuff for you. If you look, John, can you get your magnifying glasses out? There's six copies of that one in front of you. Can you hand that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this was, yeah, I can hand that.
That's what Dan's got, and this one as well. This is for later. That's mine. But the one that says working draft on it is what Dan's got up on the screen. Dan, we can't see any of that here in the room, but I think we'll use it.
No, no, we'll use it for reference. It's going out good over Zoom, so just leave it up. I can see it here on the computer screen, which means anybody else zooming can probably see it with pretty good accuracy.
The far-right column has an estimate of staff time, so that's a way to capture staff hours and dollars, Matt, for comparison.
And this is.
Dan, I think we're trying to ask questions to clarify, but we're not really getting to a go-no-go on each one of these tonight, right?
Well, no, I think that's the idea, right? We want to know if, you know, given the budget, given the staff time, given the resources that are being requested, do you want to go forward with the project as is?
Keep it going. Okay, all right. Well, that's pretty ambitious. Councilor Fornier.
Easier for me, and I'm not sure, because we're kind of all over the board here. But when I look at the capital for the horse, I look at the zoning, which is our first on page one, of getting our permitting and getting our processes done and in order in a timely fashion. So when we want to tackle bigger projects down the road, we don't have hurdles that come up and slow us down on that. So if we're looking for priorities, and I'm willing to take, and there's one councilor who puts some resources to that, to make sure we can get that done in a timely fashion. And that's vitally important, because we just dealt with that earlier tonight on different methods. So I would like to see that. I have a question on staff time, but I think there's a lot of low-hanging fruit here. I got a lot of questions on Mallet Drive, and I got a lot of questions on Lower Main Street. I know they're big-ticket items, but I think it's something that we need to do. But I'm wondering if we get our signings straightened out, we get our permitting straightened out, we get the mechanisms to do business in Freeport efficiently and effectively, a lot of this will come around and work our way. So I probably, I'm in favor of 80% of this, the two big, big projects with the big price tags. I'm not going to commit tonight, because I got a lot more questions on it.
Yeah, I think I agree with that assessment, Councilor Fornier, which is why I was trying to move the big-ticket ones off to the side for a second, so maybe we could get some early, low-hanging fruit, early consensus. Same idea, to get some endorsement on those. Matt?
So just to clarify with the staff time estimates, this is above and beyond their normal workload, right? If you do, I mean, if you just do a rough look at this, like, your new projects would take up 75% of Adam's time.
Yeah, we need to hire six people to implement this.
So, I mean, my point is, what do we do? Because they all have full-time jobs. And so what is actually realistic for us to put on someone without also saying, in terms of this project, we need to invest in additional staff? I just think that we can only do so much on people's volunteer time and without the detriment of town operations, right? I mean, unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, can I take a stab at that, Councilor Pillsbury? Because we had the same question, and we spent a lot of time going back and forth about are the additional hours or the existing hours? And one of the reasons it's so difficult is if you look at something like Mallet Drive, Adam's been working on Mallet Drive for a long time. And he was planning on continuing to work on Mallet Drive for a long time. So they're not really new hours, but if we make the project much bigger and more expansive, then there will be new hours. Same thing for the Climate Resilience Plan. Caroline and Cecilia have been putting a lot of time into it. We're about to hire someone to put in the bulk of those 600 hours that you see in the first row. So it's really a combination, and it's hard to pinpoint which are new, which are existing. There are definitely capacity issues that we need to think about, that I think we need to charge Peter to think about, saying, hey, is our staff of the appropriate size, given the amount of work they have to do? And, you know, that's a discussion that I think they can have and make recommendations back to us. But it's not an easy way to answer the question, Matt, I guess, is the short answer.
Councilor Lawrence.
Is there a way to kind of group these in clusters, like Lower Main Street and Concord Brook? Because those two are going to kind of combine, because there's a trail going to it. We've got to come up and do that. I mean, that's just another way to break this up. But then we can maybe get, I want to say economy of scale, but it's more efficiencies because we're working on the same project. So the 80 hours now is, well, it's 80 hours on both of these instead of 80 hours for this and 80 hours for that. And maybe that'll break something out to say, okay, this is it. And then from there, we go, oh, to your point, this needs to happen first before we can do the next job. Because I know this is supposed to be for a year. I don't see a year here. I see three or four years, not just money-wise, but work-wise. So to get started, great, but.
Yeah, some would definitely go on past a year. Could I make a suggestion? I think this is where John was going, was I can pick off four projects that are either low cost or minimal cost that I don't think are controversial, and maybe we could tackle those four and kind of get those approved or ask questions of those and move on to the next batch.
Sounds great. Go ahead, Dan.
All right. So here are the four that I think are in that bucket. One is the Parks Beautification and Maintenance. There's no budget associated with that yet. We're going to do some analysis, come back with a recommendation. But we already have a budget for that department. It's just thinking about how they do the work and how we structure it. Second is streamlining the permitting process. I think everybody wants to do that, and we don't think it's going to take a lot of money besides staff time and a lot of volunteer hours. Third would be the zoning. We've already allocated some money to help with that, is the RFP that Sam talked about, mostly for the design review. And then fourth would be the accessibility map, which has a $4,000 request to help with a consultant to get that initial map done. So those are the four projects: parks, zoning, permitting, and accessibility. Are there any questions on those?
Councilor Bradley.
On the ones that are, and I'm fully in support of them. This is not a question to oppose them. But I think it's not realistic to think that you can do the streamlining and the zoning with volunteers. I'm for those projects. They're high priority for me, but I think that it's unrealistic to think that you can get them done in the timeframe we're talking about doing. So they're there in anticipation of the events we expect downtown visioning to produce, projects we expect to occur, without professional help. And, you know, I just, I know our volunteers are good. I know they know their process. They've got to be involved in it. They've got to be willing to commit their time. But, you know, they have families, you know, they have jobs. And this is a full-time job for a lawyer and a land use consultant. And I think you ought to put a big number in there. And I don't know whether that number's 20 or 40. I know you've got 40 already in there somewhere, but there ought to be more if we're really going to get it done and be serious about getting it done first off. That's my comment.
Yeah, the 40 was for professional to help us with the zoning, the design review stuff. We did recognize that needs to be outsourced, and Caroline can kind of.
Well, maybe that's enough. I mean, I just, but that's my comment.
Dan, Peter, in the room, you can't see me. Oh, maybe you can now. Sam was also just going to jump up to the mic. I think volunteer is being, in all of these, are referring primarily to the planning board, right? Who has to touch this and has to spend a lot of time on it by law. I'm guessing that the intent is not to have, like, they're going to be reviewing and developing it, but there's either going to have to be professional, hired professional, or town staff. Caroline and I were also just talking on the side about this, which you couldn't see in the room. So I think all of the changes would come from some type of professional, whether it was paid town staff or consultant, like what Councilor Bradley was just mentioning. The volunteer time would be the review and deliberation and coming up with community volunteers as well as planning board to kind of give us suggestions, right? I don't think, I don't think we were thinking the volunteers would be doing the drafting work.
I don't think anybody wants that.
Sam says he doesn't think anybody wants that, Dan.
Yeah, yeah, I hear.
Yeah, no, I think Dan's right, that the 40 was mainly for the design review update, which is certainly a part of the permitting streamlining. But I think there is a lot more work that can go there, go into that project. And I agree with that comment. I think it could potentially be made a lot more efficient, especially in light of, you know, what I mentioned earlier, where, you know, I'm concerned about staff resources and wanting to move these projects forward. You know, certainly we have staff who are capable of these things, but we can also outsource and maybe get it done faster. I think there is a lot of horse carting, maybe, you know what I mean? Like, how do we figure out how to get this stuff done without putting too many carts and too many horses in various positions? Because I think, you know, we've got the comp plan out in the future. We've got the vision, which has a good head of steam and is going to continue to grow and continue to evolve as we get input from, you know, continue to get input from the public. So I, you know, I really, it's going to be, it's going to be a big lift, I think, to get this done. The more I think about it, I think just the three, the three sections that are outlined in this charter, yeah, maybe we can get those done, and we can tweak them, and we can update them. But to do a comprehensive look at streamlining permitting, if that is a priority for the council, then I think we're going to need some money to get that done faster.
Jake, and then Councilor Fornier.
My basic question was, you know, how much more money and how much faster, right? Like, those are the kind of things that we would want to know, or at least I wanted to know. That's what I had written down, like, how much quicker could we make this happen if we gave additional dollars? So just as you guys are thinking about it or working towards it, I'd be interested to know.
It's way above my pay grade. I was a volunteer.
Carol?
I agree 100% with Jake. I agree also with Ed. I'd like to see us agree that this is the priority, that we would like to have this timeline and funding resolved within. I would hope we could do it in a couple of meetings. Maybe one meeting, if we're really ambitious. But if staff had time to go out and say, we can hire professional assistants to come in to address these priorities and have a timeline to have them done in a year or whatever, for X amount of dollars, I think that is a major step forward to kicking off where we want to go with all the planning and everything that's been done. So I would like to get that solved, because quite frankly, these are the complaints I hear about.
And you're talking specifically about the permitting process or the zoning one as well?
No, I want to take permitting. I want to take zoning. I want to take design review. I want to take all the aspects we have. When developers and people want to come in to build in town, go through, let's fix this. Let's streamline it. Let's learn from our mistakes and move forward, because I think that's a key. And, you know, it's funny, a friend of mine who developed in another town told me the process he went through. He built a commercial property. And he told me the cost, and then we just looked at what it would cost if people do the same thing. It's got approved in about six weeks of the town, significantly less money. So this is what we're going to do. We need to fix that, so.
Councilor Lawrence.
We've been talking about this since I've been on the board for the last five years. So let's do something. Let's get it done.
Okay. What's on your next tranche, Dan?
Yeah, I'll add one to that tranche of ones that I didn't think were controversial, which is the Emergency Management Plan and Climate Resilience Plan. That's in large degree already funded, thanks to the grant that we just accepted tonight and the money that we've previously appropriated. So that's already in the works. We've got our sustainability coordinator, who's by and large going to be helping with that. So that might be another kind of easy one to say yes to, unless there's questions on that one, and Val is here to answer those if there are.
Right, particularly since we already got, we already got funding for the position, which can help a lot on that.
Yeah.
I would agree.
So any other questions on that one?
Is that required anyway to have done? So we need to do it anyway. So, yeah, get it done.
So can I take it, for those five, the Emergency Management Plan, Climate Resilience Plan, accessibility map, permitting process, zoning and design, and parks, we're all sort of a go on those, and especially so with permitting and design stuff?
Councilor Bradley.
Yeah, yes, for me, but I have a question about the accessibility map. You know, we've got two mapping projects going on essentially at the same time. And I guess my question is, can they be joined in some way or merged? They are.
Seth.
I wasn't quite sure why the trails on the downtown vision thing, except that it's going to be, it's a piece of the bigger map. And the bigger map is going to be part, Jay Paulus is working with us. Once we get the town evaluated for accessibility, there's going to be an electronic map and a printed map identifying everything, including the trails and the downtown vision. So it's a piece of the whole wayfinding mapping thing. So it's already being done.
Are there any financial efficiencies from joining the forces?
I don't know anything about the downtown vision piece, because we're still doing the survey that's coming up. But the. survey that's coming up, but the trails part, the land trusts in the state are all looking at accessibility as their primary goal for this year. So, I think they're being nonprofits. They'll be looking for funding to help do some of the mapping and the trail choices and construction and evaluations. The person who is being hired, Enop Clinton, has been funded by the Conservation Trust. So, his employment of assessing all the Freeport trails is already funded.
So, you've got the guy who's going to assess the trails for accessibility.
He's going to go on every single trail.
But you have no money for producing the maps or the electronics. That's got to come. And is that in your charter request?
Oh, I will say this, you know, we're still looking at that because a lot of this is online. So, it doesn't cost you anything, really.
Okay, I don't know.
So, the $4,000 is under new request, but it's really previously planned?
I have had nothing. Is Adam still here? Good. He's the money man.
Maybe. I think Jessica will take note with that.
There is $4,000 requested to hire a mapping professional to complete the mapping part of this project. Whether or not that's needed will be flushed out when progress is made with the inventorying piece of it.
Could be more, could be less.
I would not expect more. I would expect up to 4,000.
Any other questions on accessibility? I agree 100% with Sally. This is a piece of the puzzle. This is kind of kickstarting it. I think the vision we all have is you can download, print, pick up a brochure that says if you have accessibility needs in Freeport, whether you're downtown or on a trail or getting to a trail, here's a solution. Here's a guide for you. And promote the town as one that's friendly for people of all kinds of mobilities. And this is a piece of it. It's getting started. It's what we can accomplish in the short term, and we'll probably come back next year with another charter to expand it.
Counsel Fournier?
I would think we would add the... I call it signage, not signage, what the proper...
Wayfinding.
Wayfinding to this also. I think those three, they have synergy together. If we're going to do this, to efficiencies, let's bring them together and make them all three happen. I think that's a huge part. It seems too bad to do a mapping and not include how to get there. Let's get it together because I think we got some, you know...
All right, so that's six, Dan.
Yeah. On the wayfinding one.
That's half the package in the easy bucket.
I might have questions on the wayfinding one before we throw it in there. I would vote for the five right now. Like, that's good.
Let me describe what I know about wayfinding so far. Jay had presented a $25,000 kind of design package that would also include an RFP for the actual signage. We don't know how much the signs themselves are going to cost. We were sort of using a placeholder number of $200,000 for signs in downtown and also beyond. Don't know if that's right or not, but it gives Jessica a number to start to plug in. I don't know if we get to spend that in the next fiscal year. I hope we can move quickly on it, so we put it in there. But that's the two numbers that make up the $225,000, the $25,000 for design and RFP, and then $200,000 as a placeholder for signage. And both of the projects would go out for RFP. Even the design, even though Jay's been awesome about helping us get this far, because of the amount, we have to put that out to RFP as well.
So, is it possible that we could move the planning part of wayfinding into the easy bucket and leave the $200,000 for actual sign implementation to a little bit further discussion later?
Sure. It all depends on what comes out of it. You mean for tonight, yeah?
For tonight, yeah, just for tonight. I'm not talking about separating it into 14 or 15 different charters, but... Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah. Dan, did you... So, what happens if we're making progress and headway on some of these items, and we find other ways to be strategic and make additional investments? I mean, how does that come back if it's a change in scope of the project that we've approved or change in scope to the budget? I mean, what's the thinking there?
Yeah, we can always not spend money. We allocate, right? That's the easy one. We thought it was going to be $200,000 for signs. It's only $100,000, so we don't have to spend the money. That's the one everybody likes. The other one, the only challenge is we're kind of stuck with this municipal budgeting process where we have to appropriate funds every year because there's a new council every year. So, we can come up with a capital plan that stretches out five years and say, "We think this is going to be the amount of money we'll need in years two or three or four." But in year one, this is all we've raised from tax revenue. So, we don't really have any way to spend extra money if we want to. But if we do get requests, so if it's, let's say it's January of next year, so we're midway through our budget year, and it turns out, hey, there's a really good reason to spend more money on Mallet Drive, we need to find another $100,000. This happened to us with the bridges, right? We had this time crunch. We needed to make a decision in March. We couldn't wait till the next budget year. We had to go out and do a, you know, bonding was the way we did that one. So, if it's something exceptional like that, we need to have an exceptional funding mechanism. If it's a small enough number, like some of the stuff you see in the first column here about, like, parking requirements, if we need a $3,000 match for a grant that we're about to get, we can see if there's a surplus of $3,000 somewhere in the budget. That answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I guess along those lines, what happens if there's project creep and the costs go up significantly? I mean, who's the person that's going to say, "Wait a minute, this may not make as much sense as we thought?" Or, "We're already in too deep, we have to keep going." I mean, how do we assess that? And maybe I'm just thinking too far down the line here, but these are just the types of things that I think about when laying out a project. Like, are there contingencies built in to some of these numbers? I mean, what?
Yeah, honestly, same process we're using tonight, right? You know, our group of the downtown task force can help do some research, make some recommendations. But if you look at a project like, let's say, Mallet Drive being one of the bigger ones, even if we weren't around as a downtown task force, it's the same process we would use today, right? Adam and his minions come up with a recommended budget. It may turn out that paving's a lot more expensive, and then he has to go back to Jessica and figure out, "How do we deal with that? Do we postpone things till next year? We take some other project out?" So, I imagine there's always that give and take. Oh, we can't predict what that's going to be.
May I say something?
Of course.
I just don't know if I'm supposed to be talking here. Our plan is also that we would come back to the council on a quarterly basis and say, "Here's where the projects are," because we do think it's really important for us to be working with all the project leads. Because you're right, things happen in projects, both, you know, wonderful findings of opportunities and, you know, wonderful findings of expenses. So, we want to come back to the council on a quarterly basis and say, "Here's what you, you know, gave us permission to do. Here's what's actually happening." Thank you.
Right. I just want to point out that we might actually have seven that we can put in the easy bucket because I think the parking requirements was very easy and very, very small budget. So, maybe that's seven? So, we actually only have to really wrestle with five?
Well, the numbers are a little fun here, but yeah, I see where you're going.
Well, he says seven, but it's 14.
No, there's more than that.
So, the ones I have sort of highlighted on my list here are the plan, the emergency management and climate plan is one, accessibility map is two, parking is now three for consideration, permitting is four, zoning is five, wayfinding partially is six, and then parks, beautification is seven.
Right.
What about resilience plan?
I got that one. That was number one.
That was in the emergency management.
Oh, it's together, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Does anybody have questions about parking or signage?
All right, so, general consensus? We go along with that seven?
Could you give us a number for those seven?
Yeah. I can't. So, this year, if Brett's grant comes through, we'll need a match of, I think it's $3,150 between now and the end of June if we want to get the grant soon. That's new money that we haven't yet budgeted, but it's also not a great deal of money. For next year, if we do all of those projects and talk only about the design of the signage and not the signs themselves, we're looking at $29,000 for next year.
For those seven?
All seven.
All seven. I can keep him, already allocated $40,000 for the zoning. That's already kind of money we've spent.
Jake?
Is that $25,000 going towards hiring somebody, or does it go directly to Jay? I'm just a little confused on what the $25,000 is for.
Hiring somebody who may, who might be Jay.
There you go. Okay. I mean, I would be one of the firms bidding on that. And those are my costs based on experiences of projects of similar size. I've already gone through and done a two-and-a-half-year audit of the signs you have, what's missing, what's not missing, and then calculated what would be needed, not knowing what it looks like at this point. But we're doing the city of Bath right now, and they're phasing just one portion of it, which is nine signs. Next year, they'll do four more, but we did the whole master plan. The idea is to design all of the signs now, parking, regulatory, hiking trails, mallet drive, all of them in that $25,000. But yeah, we'd go out to bid.
Thank you. I just didn't know the "go out to bid" part. I wanted to make sure it was by the book.
Typically, it goes out to bid.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work, Jay.
So, I'm just trying to keep some progress moving here. So, we have consensus. We've got seven with a total budget for this year and the coming year of only $29,000 for planning and design work, not necessarily implementation of the final executed, which probably wouldn't happen in that timeframe anyways. Great. I see it. I see six nodding heads here, including... Well, I can't see my own head, but there we go. Great. Question? Daryl?
And that just, for fun, that leverages about $103,000 worth of grant funding as well.
Right. Daryl?
For process, I'm wondering if we could take these seven projects now that we have, whatever the list is. Maybe at the next council meeting, I actually have numbers, and some of this will be done during the budget process. But I would like to really expedite stuff, so this, we don't get the cart before the So, if we've identified this, how are we going to implement it? We must have to take some other action, and I'm looking to implement it.
Just wave the magic wand and...
Well, it's not a case of waving the magic wand. I think it's a case of coming back at the next meeting, saying, "We have got some consultants in these areas. These are the costs. These are the three bids. These are the priorities we're doing on permitting or whatever." That's what I would like to see done. We have a timeline of six to nine months.
I think that's the direction we give to staff to see if we can make that happen, so... Well, nobody's leaving the room yet, so... Yeah. Ed?
Yeah, I just thought of, I mean, there's a couple other low-budget projects that aren't in this list that come to my mind. One, believe it or not, is Sewer, because Sewer's not asking for any money except to pay for Woodard and Curran to do the grant preparation and the CIP planning right now in this budget. The rest of it is just to say, "We're willing to do funding of other things later on in another budget process down the road." So, that could be added to this without busting the bank. And the other one is the transportation one, which is really small money to do the planning for a transportation system for the downtown. I think Kathy said 10? Yeah, so it's another $15,000. You get two more projects. That's $7,000 a project.
Yeah, let's throw those two up on the table and see what questions we have on Sewer or transportation.
I mean, maybe Sewer is more controversial than I think it would be, but, and I don't know about transportation, but I...
Certainly, the planning part's not. I agree. I would agree that the planning part makes good sense. We've been hashing that over for quite a while, and that's a pretty small amount. So, I would be strongly in favor of that. And the other one was transportation, also largely planning at this point.
It's all planning at this point.
Not buying anything.
Not buying anything.
Yeah, the Woodard and Curran, right.
It's $5,000 from us and $5,000 that Sewer District has agreed to put in for Woodard and Curran to do their stuff.
Yep.
But the point of this is to go through and look and see what's on the horizon and kind of give like a, "Yeah, but do we want to be really going down this path right now?" And so, I look at your, the next ask for Sewer is $600,000, so I think that's why it's not included in the initial.
But to my, just so it's clear, the $600,000 is only if you agree to apply for a grant and only if you get it, and only if it's for, you know, a project that qualifies. No, that's wrong. Those two things. It's for, do you want to go for the grant? You get to decide that. That takes that off if you don't want it. If you do want it and you get the grant, then you got a match, and that's true. At that point, you'd have to decide whether you want to accept the grant funds. But it's not now. But if you don't ever think you want to go down that road and get $4 million worth of grant for the Sewer, you probably shouldn't spend the $5,000 or $10,000 for Woodard and Curran. See what I mean?
I almost feel that we probably want the Woodard and Curran planning segment almost completely separate because I really, I see them as two separate conversations about whether or not we're going to collectively team up with the Sewer District on these larger projects, which I'm now thinking, you know, again, that $600,000 is not a, by this date, we're going to then commit the money. I mean, it's a long process to go through, very long process, and probably in increments, maybe even over two fiscal years or more. So, I would strongly encourage us to put the planning part in place now, and then we can... That opens the door for us to have the conversation about what the rest of that potential investment might look like.
And that's all Sewer's asking for now, is that small planning part?
The planning part. Let's get the planning done because then we know what we're talking about.
Right, I agree.
Can I ask a clarifying question? The $5,000 that we would spend, so the $10,000 that, after we apply the Sewer District's match fund, the $10,000 we give to Woodard and Curran is largely to go down the road of applying for those grants, right? So, if we say yes to spending that $10,000 now, and they prepare these grant applications, and they come back in a year or whenever it is, and say, "We have an opportunity to accept the grant funding, but we need a half million dollars in match," does that, I know it doesn't officially bind us, but does it set the ball on motion to say, "Well, you paid for the money to do the grant application. Why wouldn't you do the match?"
There's no...
I might have a little bit close tied together.
The answer is because it's only $5,000 to figure out whether you want to do the match, and the match could be a lot of money. But you, you know, so you got the discretion. You got control over the money you're going to spend. If you don't want to look at it at all, I agree with you. If you don't think that you would ever consider a match for Sewer funding for the, then maybe you don't want to spend $5,000. But remember, it's not just for grants. It's also for CIP planning, and it's both, and it's cheap. And Woodard, I think, I mean, please don't say to them that I said this, but I think they're setting themselves up for getting a lot of work in the future if any of this stuff comes to fruition. And that's smart of them. They know a lot about the Sewer District, and they've been really, really good about giving us time and information above and beyond the call.
I agree.
It's fair to say they're also one of three extremely competent wastewater engineering firms that are running out of the state, too.
So it's not like it's some fly-by-night company. They're as good as you're going to get around here.
Right, and they know this, they know this Sewer District back and forth. Anyway, that's the pitch.
In that sewer bucket, there was a third ask, the five thousand, the five hundred thousand match, and then there was another hundred thousand of discretionary fund that we would make available for qualified projects that we want to incentivize, which is still, you know, the qualification's still being, to be determined. And my, I'm for the five thousand and considering the five hundred thousand. The hundred thousand, I, I like the idea, and the feedback that I gave to you and Brett before, is that I'd love to see that project not be allocated specifically for sewer connection fees, but with that, we start a fund that we use for qualified projects that we want to incentivize downtown that, that can be applied for general development costs. Because then I don't want to open up the can of worms and saying, "Why are we subsidizing sewer connection fees but not accessibility, or sprinkler, or, 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 you know, the cost of solar panels or stretch codes?" So there are a lot of things that are a burden on development. Sewer connection fees are one, and we've determined that ours are in line at the high end, but in line with other towns. So if we start a fund that's discretionary, I would say, "Let's, let's do it, but not make it only for sewer connection."
I have absolutely no objection to that, that suggestion. I mean, as long as we can, I mean, you set us on this task because of connection fees, right? I mean, that's why we did all this work. And so we started with what you asked us to start with. But as long as you can cover connection fees and the kind of fund you're talking about, there was no suggestion here that there would be a current commitment to appropriate or allocate a hundred thousand dollars to sewer connection fees. It was to wait for qualified projects that applied for it. So if you, if they can, if they can qualify for this fund, and you can get better use of the fund, and you can figure out how to fund it, which is what you said you wanted to wait to do till after tonight, could be a lot of ways to fund it, then there's no problem with what you're suggesting. But it's not a current request for a hundred thousand dollars. It was down the line, as per your suggestion to me, which was a breakthrough in the conversations that we had at the committee, because it got us away from needing to, to talk about what John wanted us to talk about, or suggested would be hard to talk about, which would be the whole question of taxpayers' support for sewer rates. We don't have to do that now, because we're not doing that.
All right, so I think the last of the easy bucket items on our, on our presentation list here is the arts and festival activity and the improvements at Memorial Park, so that we have a place and a venue to actually have those things happen. And, and a very, very, very modest budget to actually do some programming for that, which I think could be identified here at Town Hall as a, as a investment to make those events happen. They're not going to happen out of thin air. It's going to be really hard to actually put a fence around and put a gate and charge a fee to get into Memorial Park, since you can just walk right in. So I think we're talking about supporting that in a very, very modest way. They'll be matching funds from various activities and our local arts agency, Meeting House, Meeting House Arts, doing that. So at least the first phase, the, the platform, so we can try that out this summer and, and see how it works. And, and the four thousand dollars for the programming, so that we can, we can support the activities that are going to happen. Those don't come out of thin air.
Question for you. Yes, love to say yes. I love that we're saying yes to all these things. We're saying five thousand dollars, up to five thousand dollars for the platform, which we might not need. And then for the programming, and this, I guess, is a question for Suzanne. Was it four thousand dollars, or was it fourteen thousand dollars for the programming?
Thank you for the chance to clarify. For the, the infrastructure piece, the platform, the designs for the future pavilion and decision-making, the public input to that process, and then an RFP to really go out and, and actually create the, the actual design, that's the fourteen thousand four hundred. The actual events piece, that second charter, is the music events and such, which I've asked for, four thousand three hundred and fifty, Meeting House Arts has. And that is a small portion of what it's actually going to cost us.
So John, was your proposal a five thousand for the platform and then the four thousand three hundred and fifty for events?
The five thousand, I think, in addition to, was the part the town put in, the town's cost. I'm not, you know, that's something I think we should continue to talk about, because I understood there were perhaps portions of a platform that could be created as a composite at some point, so it may be cheaper than five thousand, but to be talked about.
Yeah, I was not really sticking to the numbers, since they're really rough estimates at this point. I was just sticking to the activities, which is, at, at a minimum, we get a platform up this summer, and at a minimum, we have a very small amount for programming, which will be matched by other activities in the community. So the... Daryl?
I can just, one of the residents called me, and, and they're confused. Is the Meeting House a private organization or a public organization? I said, "I'll ask."
Thank you for asking. I appreciate that. We're a 501(c)(3). We're also the local arts agency, the LAA. We're the official arts, as we talked about last time I was here. So we are a not-for-profit. We are not a private. I mean, we're private in that we are not-for-profit, but we're in the business of creating a mission and fulfilling a mission, which is the arts and culture for this greater Freeport.
So if we funded the four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, that would be open to all Freeport residents to come?
Absolutely, and that, that's exactly what we want to do.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that.
And I've talked to Suzanne about that, that other fourteen thousand dollar piece, about coming back to the council and having that, because I think that merits a, a separate discussion around how we fund arts. Beyond just, just a platform. So we're trying to figure out a way for her to come back before council and make that ask formally and discuss that as a separate thing. So, so tonight, what I, all I was going to ask for was the, what's in, in the charter, the, for the, the platform, and then the additional four thousand three hundred and fifty is fine with me as well.
Could I address that if I don't, if you don't mind? I feel like what has been presented now, and thank you, Dan, I understand. We, we continue to have a conversation about this, but it strikes me that it will short shrift, I think, this opportunity to really figure out what this pavilion needs to look like. I think the platform is one small part of this. I think the idea of how we position it, we take surveys, we get people to engage in where the right location is. This is a big opportunity, and it's one, again, I'll remind you, that was a huge part of the revisioning process, where individual citizens of the town were really interested in how we create this pavilion in, in Memorial Park. So, thank you.
And again, my, my preference is to have that as a separate discussion, only because that my concern, which is what we talked about last night, is that we, we want to have a strong public process for a lot of the other things on this list, too, about zoning and design, and a lot of these other things will require professionals to come in and help us as well. All of the time is putting, is being put in either by, you know, town employees and staff time, or it's being put in by volunteers, and we're creating this kind of third bucket, saying, "Well, Meeting House Arts is a wonderful organization. They've offered to step up and help." But it's not a volunteer organization anymore, once we start allocating money to do the, the design chariots and forums and things like that. So, so the question in my mind is still open. Do we host those internally? Does Adam or Caroline put together a design session? Do we work on a public forum to get the, do we ask for volunteer architects to come and, and help with designs? Is that feasible? I don't know yet. Maybe that the answer is we have to pay someone to do it, and maybe the people that we pay is Meeting House Arts to do it. They certainly be top of my list. But, but I, I think it's a little premature to allocate those funds tonight, which is why I wanted to have that discussion separately.
Dan, you and I have a good time together, don't we? I, I really feel like this is, again, short shrift the, the process here. I think we have the opportunity to do something really important, and it is absolutely within the scope of Meeting House Arts to carry out the process that I've described. That is not a, not a question in my mind, and I think it's something, again, we are willing to put in a great deal of our own personal staff time. We have an architect on our board, Lynn, Lynn Schaefer, and we have, and she's willing to help us orchestrate this process. This is not a, an organization that will take this on lightly. We are ready to take the, the heavy lift that this is, but also the opportunity to utilize talent that we already have in this town.
All right. Can we get the asks written out a little bit more? Because I feel like this one's a little bit confusing, because it's not all in our packet, right? Like, the total dollar amounts needed and whatnot?
No, it's all in the charter.
It is? I thought there was a second charter that we've been referencing? That's not in here, correct? Sorry to make you keep walking.
The packet includes only the initial charter, which is all...
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna stay up here, but... Now, there's a, a second charter that I presented to you under the, the third, the second goal of the events, events, festivals, and, you know, the public music. And that was the, the four thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. I, I shared two copies earlier tonight, and that is part, but I hope we can integrate those two together, because they're really, you cannot ascertain the, the way the pavilion will work, or the ultimate location in, in Memorial Park, without the festival, without the music. So how, how do we do both under one charter? And that's my point here. This is where it gets messy, and this is where, is where we have to have a, a broader view of this, because, again, you need the music to have the pavilion, and you need the pavilion to have the music.
So can, can somebody just outline the asks? Because, again, I don't think it's in this specific one, because we're talking about a second charter. That was presented tonight, but I haven't seen it yet, because it hasn't come down this way.
Okay.
So we're talking five thousand dollars this year for this portion that I have in my packet, and what's the other ask for this year?
So there, there are really sort of three, and this is confusing, I know, and I'm sorry, because I, I really wanted the, the more comprehensive proposal submitted. But the original proposal has five thousand, which is designated to the town for the actual building of the platform in the park. And that was for materials and, and, you know, the structural aspects of this town. The town, as I was informed earlier, the town has pieces of this potential platform in, 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 in hand already. So that five thousand is something we will, in, in some point, talk about and figure out if we really need that five thousand, or do we really already have essentially that material in hand? So the second piece to that is the piece that I've presented for Meeting House Arts to conduct the idea of, of public survey, you know, have the platform there, to have the music performed, six to eight concerts in the park. We will have surveys done, the farmer's market, the perfect opportunity to have those surveys completed at little cost. We will have a process of design of the pavilion opportunities, the different types of designs that could be there. We'll have a public process to determine which one the public likes of those, kind of like the Portland Museum of Art. You know, we have some designs. We have people vote on them. And then we'll have an RFP that will go out to figure out what, you know, who, who would be able to construct that based on the public decide, decision of the design. And that's the fourteen thousand four hundred.
Does that include the programming, the fourteen?
No, that, the, the programming is the third piece, which is the second charter, and that's the, the four thousand three hundred and fifty. That's for the music.
And that's all FY twenty-three?
Yes.
Like, right now, you want this before summer?
That's all this summer.
And that's not included in the seventy-five already approved funding and the fifty thousand grant funding? That's what I'm seeing on my list under this one.
Correct. Yep. Seventy-five is the, the Town Hall beautification project.
Oh, okay, so that's amphitheater.
One thousand five thousand dollar TIF funds for Meeting House Arts, and then the grants of the T-Mobile fifty thousand dollar grant for Town Hall beautification.
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with what we're talking about for, for us.
I just want to bring the conversation back to what we're, we're trying to get momentum and endorsement on, the type of the projects and not get hung up on the dollars, because the dollars are very rough estimates at this point, so they might change. In fact, they're almost certain to change. But I think we're, we're trying to get at, are these the, the essence of the projects that we want to move forward with? And not, not that we, any that we haven't mentioned yet are not, it's just that they're a little bit harder. And I was trying to get the easy ones out of the way first, so we could get to the harder ones, like Lower Main Street and Mallet Drive. But I, I just, yeah, I just want to, I guess, focus on that. We're, we're trying to get some, to ease up the discussion here, an hour or so into it, to, to get to the, to the more juicy parts, which are fewer in number, but more complex. I'm sorry if it feels like I'm rushing along, but that's really just my motive, is to get to the, to the harder ones about whether or not we're ready to tackle the larger, you know, hefty six-digit, maybe even over a million-dollar projects.
I have a question. Do we need to do that tonight? So in, in process, I think we've made some major steps forward tonight. And if we have directed staff and directed other people to come forward, so we know what the funding is going to be in a very near future, there's a comment made earlier, "We put the cart before the horse." I don't know. I, I, and, and there's some value to what I see in these projects, but I can, is it one councilor here put my hand around this? Fund these, get these out of the gate, get them moving forward, and then... I don't know. Is, is there a time urgency with the other projects?
We're, we're really close. Well, once we sort out, you know, this events one, then we're down to four projects. Two of them, I think, are pretty easy. They're both EV-related, and there's a little bit of a discussion we need to have. And then the other two are, you know, Mallet Drive and Main Street, which are the bigger ones. And I think even a little bit of discussion there to get some, some guidance will be good, because those are going to be very long projects anyway. So I doubt we're going to dot all the i's and cross the t's on those, but if we can at least touch on them tonight. So I think we've got to finish up, you know, infrastructure to the degree whatever we're comfortable with tonight. And again, to John's point, we're not solidifying budget numbers, but we're getting budget guidance to go back to Jessica to say, "This is what we think you should include in the budget you present to us." And then we could quickly dispense with EVs and, and talk about Mallet Drive and Lower Main Street, if you guys are okay with that.
Peter, Peter's got a comment. Hang on, Dan.
Hey, well, tell me when it's appropriate, because I don't want to jump in front of a discussion that's already happening, but I want to go back and touch on, because we have some, a lot of interest on the council here in the room, Dan. I think everyone in the room can see it, on the zoning and permitting stuff. And I want to go back and touch on that with some feedback to staff and things like that before, before we wrap up these easy ones, because I got a couple ideas. But are we done with the arts and culture and all that kind of stuff right now? Is now a good time to do that?
I think that's fair. We can always come back to arts and culture.
Can I just make one right now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If we do everything that we just talked about, we're talking roughly twenty-nine thousand dollars for this year and twenty-nine thousand dollars for next year.
I don't want to jump anybody that had anything else to give down there, so.
More than that, Chip. Yep.
Well, that, that's just the numbers that we just talked about right here. Put fourteen fifty and, fourteen four and the ninety-three fifty, which is the platform potentially. And then the five thousand for the sewer, Transportation. Maybe it's a little more for the, I don't remember what the Transportation was, but just going through the numbers.
Ten.
So it's thirty-eight this year, or thirty-nine this year and twenty-nine next year.
Yep.
An extremely modest amount of money for the breadth of the projects that we're talking about. I just might have... Peter?
Yes, so one thing that I know our planner and planning board chair were just discussing, they both identified as something we kind of need to be mindful of. And I think I got a solution, but I want to bounce it off council, so tell me if this is crazy. We have those multiple different projects for the zoning, permitting, planning kind of ideas that we talked about at the very beginning. I know Council of Fornier identified those as priorities. I think there were a couple heads. A lot of heads nodding on the bench, at least. One concern that was raised is the comp plan status. So that's something that is on the current workload for the planning board. They've got an RFP going out from staff. Some of the changes that are included in that are going to probably have to happen after the comp plan's completed. As you know, that's kind of like a twelve-month process. Being sensitive to that, I also know there's a lot of push. And I know previous to this meeting, the council has also identified the, some of the procedure in permitting and things like that as a priority, even before at our workshop, your goal-setting workshop. So I think we need to break out those two, and Dan, we may need to go and kind of do some of that with the, with the bigger, with the smaller group after this meeting, but break out some of those things into things that can be done. I think a lot of the process permitting, streamlining stuff doesn't rely, and I think Sam, correct me if you think I'm wrong on this, but doesn't rely on the comp plan being done first to do. But a lot of the zoning overhaul stuff, if you're talking about meat and potatoes of zones and things like that, it's going to be really hard to justify that based on our eleven, twelve-year-old current comp plan. So what I'm proposing is to go back, I know we asked to bring that back next meeting or two meetings or whatever, for a proposal for cost. I'm going to direct staff, unless somebody tells me otherwise and thinks it's a bad idea, to look at breaking that out into the procedural stuff that can get done, identified immediately and be done either before or concurrently with the comp plan, and what kind of stuff in these project lists are going to require to be done after the comp plan's completed, because that'll be twelve months out, and I know that that's not what anyone up here is asking. You're not asking to start this in thirteen months. You're asking to start at least what we can now. Is that, does any of that sound crazy before we go down?
I've always...
I've always understood that the comp plan was the penultimate project of planning in this community and it needs to be done. I don't understand how you can do the comp plan before you know what you're going to do to change standards and goals and ambitions for the downtown through the visioning process. So I would say, pick up on the standards and other things that are in design review that maybe you're bunching into the quick do. If there are the quick do things that we can do and fund, let's do them. And if they inform the comprehensive plan, that's great. But I wouldn't wait for the comprehensive plan to do any of the things we talked about earlier. Because I think we're already being pinioned by projects that are coming forward because we said we want them, but we don't have standards yet to guide us in how to approve them or to condition them.
Yeah, if you need to speak, I'd hit the podium. Yeah, absolutely. We need to at least have a direction, I think, part of the goal tonight before we, so we don't come back in two weeks or four weeks, be like, what were we doing again?
I feel like you're backpedaling to a good place. We tried to present the charters to a really realistic workload. We put a lot of time into this. We know we have current projects, like we put a lot of time in cannabis. We're digitizing, we're working on a climate action plan, we're bringing in some new staff people. We have to implement LD 2003 maybe by July 1st. We have the, the comp plan is valuable in Maine. It's the guiding document for our land use decisions. And it's not just the downtown, it's bigger parts. You know, it will show what we want for our downtown, but it's also going to show where we want growth. So we use that as the guiding document for a lot of the land use decisions. The conversation here, when we looked at the list from principle, I wish things were broken out differently because we're intertwining all these terms that mean different things. We really have three regulatory documents, as Sam did. We have the subdivision ordinance, which yes, there's process, it can be cleaned up there. We can look at defining things differently. That's been flagged and that's already underway. We have the Section 602 Site Plan Review. We took our first stab at it, we've worked with FEDC, we've processed MET, we've worked at the planning board, we've had public input, we got input from project review. We're bringing you that tonight. If you take action on that, we'll get to see the impact those changes make in our community. Design review, I feel like our current comp plan and our vision are aligned that we want things to happen, but we still care about our community's historic resources. So we want them to happen in a tasteful way to achieve a certain objective, but to make them easy. And so I truly believe that if we clean up the design review standards, that's going to fix a lot of our problems and constructive feedback, I like to call it, about things that are getting in the way downtown. All of these pieces are presented to you in this charter for year one. That's a significant workload for staff. If we want to take the entire zoning ordinance for the town of Freeport and throw it out, we really need to make sure that we, as a community, have gone through that comp plan process to set our vision for the entire town of Freeport to make those two things align. So it's really a complex project with a whole bunch of different layers that we try to break it down to what we can do in year one and be realistic. But process, I think, we can look at internally. However, I think it is also good to have someone look at it from the outside.
Can we bring, do you think we can go over that internally with our people, me, you, everybody else and down this end of the building and identify the things that can be, which sound like most of them are in the site plan sub, design review overhaul one, but maybe not all of them? Can we identify those and bring those back to a future meeting successfully without throwing out the entire zoning ordinance and doing that after the comp plan?
Yeah, I think if we took some time with different people and got into the, it's kind of separating them out because lumping them together is just not great.
Two points, Caroline. Number one, I think you're going to need some help. Your workload is tremendous and they need some help. So we need to buck up and bite the bullet, get that done. My only problem I have with your idea, Peter, is the ownership piece. Everyone's had a little piece of developing this stuff. Your idea of bringing somebody in from the outside with a fresh view, now's the time to do that. And, you know, that's what we need to do. Because I think if we go through the process and we do it internally without someone from the outside looking, we tend to say, hey, it's always worked good for us, we're not going to change it. As opposed to someone saying, what the heck are you guys doing? So.
And what I might, maybe what I said came across wrong. Yeah, I'm saying, can we come back with, let me make sure I'm 100%. Can we come back with a plan on what that looks like, including bringing in consultants? But we're going to develop that and have a proposal to you guys of what we can do. And then maybe the council feels differently, like other parts should be done first. And it's really ultimately their decision to direct the planning board. So, but we can, okay. I wanted to be a little, have a little more discussion on those two items before we get marching orders because now they're going to delve into the.
Yep, no, I think that's good. Throwing out the entire zoning ordinance and rewriting it in the next year is, is going to be tough. Would make my life easier, though. Right? Okay. I think we have a good work plan.
I've got some ideas to start from, yep.
Great.
They got to get into the deep stuff, though.
All right, so Dan, I think the next two we'll take will be the two that are related, almost identical to each other, which is EV charging infrastructure. One of them on municipal property and the second one being ways for the town to look at encouraging, enticing, and at some point requiring EV infrastructure for development projects in certain areas. Why don't you jump in from there? I guess you've had some conversations up to now.
Sure, let me tee up the municipal facilities one first and Valley's here for backup. The, they're similar but different, right? So the EV charging stations at municipal facilities are chargers that we would put on town property and invite the public to use. And this I'm already seeing with people that I know that have EVs that kind of plan their journeys around it. Like, oh, I'm in Portsmouth or Boston and I'm going to stop somewhere to recharge before I head home to wherever I am in Maine or New Hampshire. So they're making decisions based on that. The more we can have of that in Freeport, the better it will be for us. And I don't want to say side benefit, because it's really the main benefit, is all the climate reasons to do it. So I think it makes sense to do, there's a lot of money, like Valley suggested, to support this. So the $210,000 that you see in the charter, we got, it's again, it's sort of a placeholder amount. We said it's roughly $30,000 of hardware for each charger. And we wanted six of them in three locations. And it's about $10,000 roughly for site work at each of those locations. So that's the total cost. I don't think any of us are thinking that we would spend $210,000 to get those chargers. I think we're thinking we would spend, I'm going to guess, maybe a quarter of that and look for the rest of it to be grant money. And that's what Valley said, they're willing to kind of chip in and volunteer time to do the research and talk to other towns and say, what kind of chargers? There are also third-party partners who will say, we'll put the charger in and we'll make our money back by selling the electricity. So a lot of different ways to make it happen. I think what we're looking for tonight is a sense of, do we want to have about six chargers in three locations? Do we want to spend some tens of thousands in support if we can get grant money for the rest?
I just want to clarify that the scope for this particular item is level two or level three? I don't think a level two charger costs anywhere near $30,000. So I think we're talking about level three? Valley?
Valley?
Sorry. We are talking about level two, but that also would include the installation cost.
Wow.
Valley, what is, what is the installation cost? What is it? What's the scope of work that goes into what you're calling installation?
Well, in these particular locations, because they're already paved, it would involve digging a trench into the pavement to put all the conduits to the source of the energy that will then go to the charger. There may be locations where we don't have to do that or we can just dig the trench outside of the pavement and come from the outside into the parking lot. But since we haven't really defined which locations and what the circumstances are for each one of them, we just went with the highest cost, just to be conservative.
Councilor Fornier?
If these are installed on municipal properties, is the town of Freeport going to be paying for the electricity that goes to there? Or the user's going to be some sort of credit card machine, whatever, will they be paying for it? So there'll be no cost to taxpayer?
It would be up to your purview to decide which way to go. One benefit to charging is that people then don't sit and park there forever because they continue to get charged for as long as they're parked there and they're plugged in, even though the battery may be full already. But if you wanted to just make a really good point about we support EV charging in this town, you may want to do it free of charge. But that would not be our board's decision, it would be yours. So we would come to you with both options and then you would decide for us.
I am a charge guy, I don't want it free. So that's where I stand on that, so.
Our town engineer, Adam, has got a comment on this. Adam, please step up.
How about a meeting or so for us to come back and fine-tune the details of the charging stations and the cost? There's no doubt there is site work cost in the form of asphalt, gravel, trenching, electrical connection, et cetera. The numbers, I put those numbers in the charter, okay? Those were derived from reaching out to other municipalities using their data, which is probably a few years old now. So let me, give me a meeting to tighten up those numbers and see if I goofed, see if they're just old data. And, but I think to Dan's point earlier, you know, there's, the expectation is not to, you know, spend $210,000 on six chargers. Does that help?
Does it help you for us to know which sites we think would be the good ones?
I think the committee has a fairly good handle on the first phase.
Got six of them, right?
Town hall, train station and library.
Right. Yeah, so there are three locations, each with two chargers in this charter as proposed. But that's just the initial proposal. We can be flexible and change the number of locations or the number of chargers or apply for the grants, see what we get, and then decide what is most appropriate in terms of how much we have and what kind of resources we can ask for from the town.
I would love to participate in that. I'm driving EV, I'm a consumer, I know where all the free ones are, I know where all the pay ones are. And I absolutely, as Dan described, I navigate my trip. Because I have an older EV that doesn't go very far. So I have to know where all the charges are if I'm going to leave Freeport, essentially.
And, you know, we.
Participate in that.
To support, John, I mean, we have a, what do you call it, electric car. And, you know, when we go on a trip that's more than a couple hundred miles, it's agony in our house to figure out where we're going to stop or we can get a cup of coffee. You know, how much anxiety can you accept in order to go that close to that charger? So, you know, we could be a real magnet for travel through the state of Maine if we could provide assurance of electricity for people visiting the state, not just Freeport, and bring them in here. So I'm 100% behind this, but it'd be great to know the numbers a little better.
Yeah. Coincidentally, my favorite show is This Old House, okay? And they did a segment on charging. Because they were installing a charging station in a residential home at their subject house. And what they presented in the segment was, for a level one charger, you get three to five miles per hour of charge.
Yeah.
Level two, you get 25 to 30 miles per hour of charge. So level three is your commercial-type development, higher level, much faster and more expensive level of charging.
So what I'm hearing is if we've got two councilors that have EVs, to avoid a conflict of interest, they would have to charge for it. So they're not giving themselves something for free.
No way.
Great. Excellent suggestion, I think, to bring this one back before we make an endorsement of it so that we can move it forward.
Can I propose a tweak of that, which is that, and I think I know the answer, but if there's no appetite for spending any town money on it, we should know that. If there is appetite, it would be good to know, is there appetite for spending, say, $50,000? And then Valley and Adam can come back and say, oh, okay, for that money, we think we can get this many chargers in this many locations. Because if there's not appetite or there's not a big appetite, I don't want them to kind of waste their time on stuff. So I want to get some indication of, you know, we don't want to ask for $210,000. But if we ask for $50,000, would there be some indication that, yeah, that would buy some chargers and some chargers are good? And come back to us and tell us how many and where.
Do you guys mind if I?
Sure, step up, Sam.
Good comment. So I also drive an EV sometimes. And a couple of things. One, I think a lot of the costs for this sort of project are probably in the mobilization and infrastructure. If you're thinking about locations, the cost is in the location, not in the number of chargers that are there. So if you're going to cut pavement, if you're going to put conduit in, if you're going to run cable, it doesn't matter if there's two or 10. I mean, you can throw a couple, I mean, obviously it does matter. But there's so much of that cost in the, you know, in the mobilization.
Two each at two locations is going to cost a lot more than four at one location for the exact site preppery.
Yeah. Yeah, basically. So I think, I think thinking bigger potentially or thinking in terms of value is going to be a good way to go. Another thing, if you're thinking destination, I think having a level three charger is going to be a lot more expensive. Certainly, you know, I installed my level two charger at my house. I think I spent about $1,000 on wire and the charger and the permit. And, but a level three charger, obviously, the current is so much higher, it's going to be a much bigger investment. However, there are no level three chargers between Portland and Augusta. So, right now, that I know of.
Well, the Tesla chargers, it beans.
That's true, the Tesla chargers. But for those of us who don't drive Teslas, the, you know, the level three charging is few and far between, at least right now. So something to think about. If the goal is make Freeport a destination, sure, they don't stay as long because, you know, you don't get the charge. But.
I agree.
Couple cups of coffee in the jacket somewhere.
Yeah, I do, too.
So Dan asked for some kind of consensus that at least moving forward on EV charging at a smaller scale than the number that's in the charter right now, but at least an endorsement to go pursue this and bring it back? People interested in hearing more about it?
I don't support it at this point for the cost, so. I'm very wary about the proposal.
About the what?
About the proposal and the cost, so at this point.
Jake?
I'm definitely interested in hearing more. I think the value portion, so like if we're redoing out front of the Town Hall and that's a substantial thing and we can throw in a couple of chargers while we do that, it makes a lot of sense where it does. Maybe not with that specific program, project. But anywhere where you can do it cost-effectively, very encouraging to do it, very much.
Chip?
Are there any, anyone doing any gas station or energy stations? I mean, we have.
Hostile fuels?
No, for EVs. I mean, where you, I know it's every, well, if you drive up the highway, usually at the rest stops, they have them there so you can go in and get. But is anyone doing something like this in the gas station style?
Not yet.
The Irving Diner with the convenience store where you can go and have food and hook up behind the bed or something?
Well, yeah, but I mean, yeah, something like that.
I mean, like the Electrify Americas, they're putting them in strategic places where people could go and do something while they're waiting for their car to charge for that half an hour or whatnot. So like, that model is working, just not exactly the way you're.
Those are all level threes, which are much more expensive. So, but they're also, that's what the traveling public is expecting. So.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, Caroline?
I feel like I'm hearing a lot of hesitation or sticker shock for the cost. We're getting a lot of regular emails from the state with all this climate action work we're doing and our understanding is there's money in the pipeline for EV chargers, especially in the municipal world. So if there's hesitation for cost on this specific charter, is there interest or support to shifting it to staff time? And if we can pursue some of these opportunities through grant funding, is that an option? Would be, that would be accessible? Because I would hate for us to miss the opportunity for grant funding if it's out there. But if it's a concept you just don't support, staff time's viable too, then. I just wanted to make sure you knew there's supposed to be money coming relatively soon for some of these infrastructure costs.
I think Dan's concern about if the council doesn't have the appetite for it is to save Adam going and doing a week's worth of research to bring it back to the council if they're not going to vote for it, so.
Right, but I don't know if it makes a difference if it's municipally funded or grant funded, which is.
Yeah, I'd prefer it to be grant funded, but I'd support it either way. And I think we ought to do the research to figure out what it means to us. I mean, it's, it could be beneficial in a number of different ways. I mean, it's, it could be beneficial in a number of different ways. If it's too expensive, we know that, in our hearts.
John, can Valley? Go ahead, Valley.
I just wanted, I wanted to add that usually when you apply for a grant of this type, you don't only get the hardware, you also get some funding for installation. So I don't necessarily think that we would have to foot the entire bill for installing these things if we were able to get them through grant funding. And I also wanted to add, on the Electrify corridor, we did check where the state of Maine is planning on installing the fast chargers along the route. And unfortunately, they go from Portland and skip all the way to Topson. So we missed it by just a few miles.
If we do this, if we do get grants, can we charge, or is that something, is that the grant says, oh, you've got to have it?
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
Yeah, if we get a grant and we put these in, are we allowed to charge for charging? Or is that something that, you got this grant money, it's all taxpayer money, you got to eat that cost?
That is a good question. I will research that, I don't know the answer.
I think if the council feels strongly about what we're putting our time into, even if it's grant money, then I'd suggest that you give us, you know, clear directive. If it's, if you want us to put them in, if they don't charge, then we'll pursue it. If it's flipped, then we wouldn't pursue it. I mean, it still takes time, but I just wanted, or the money could not come along, in which case then we won't pursue that.
All right, so I think, I think we have certainly enough questions that we want to move this one to have it come back at a future meeting, but I also hear enough interest to find out a lot more information before we make a decision of, no, we don't ever want to chase this, or yes, we want to go forward at all expenses here. So I think we need to get some more information. So Dan, I think that leaves us with the last two, which is Lower Main Street and Mallet Drive? Is that the right?
We still have the other EV one to do.
Oh, right.
The other EV one, and I think this one is, there's no money attached to it. So this one is really the question here is, when people propose new development on private lots in town, if they're building apartment buildings or stores or whatever, do we write an ordinance that mandates that says you shall either install chargers that are probably accessible or accessible to your residents, and/or make your parking lot EV ready? So the trenches that Valley was talking about, saying even if you don't put the chargers in now, you have to put the cables in underground in case somebody wants to do the chargers later. So we can either say, you have to have chargers, you have to be EV ready, or we can say, let the market decide, because residents are demanding this for apartments that they want to rent, so if you're a smart developer, you'll put them in. So that's the discussion. And Valley came to me saying, can I go ahead and write this ordinance? And I said, whoa, why don't you wait and see what the council would support first before you put the effort and research into the ordinance?
I'm for the market forces. I think we let the market decide what we need to do.
Also for the market.
Jake? Do you have your hand up? Did I see your- No, okay, sorry. I, for one, think it's a great idea and I think we can start off at this point with having the infrastructure in place, that you don't have to put the expensive part, which is the charger, or figure out who's going to pay for the electricity, but at least get the pipe, which is next to nothing if you're planning for it when you're doing your site. I'll just point out that Maine housing requires that of all affordable housing that they're financing around the state right now, and so is HUD and USDA. Jake?
I would be in favor of drafting the ordinance, going through the process and figuring out what the additional costs are of doing it, because I think you're right. If it's minimal to do it in the beginning stages and very expensive in the later stages, it makes sense to have the infrastructure there, but knowing that cost would be really helpful. Maybe we already know that, but just having the sustainability board provide that when we go to adopt it would be very helpful.
Others?
Yeah, I'm in support of it.
Can we incentivize the addition of EV through the zoning process? Are there ways to give somebody a perk who's doing a development if they put it in? Can you think of things that height, width, something? Yeah, okay, I'm for that. I'm for incentivizing it as opposed to requiring it, regulating it, myself.
Our current developers are doing it. Their customers want it. Our current developers are doing it because their tenants will want it, so.
So the Freeport Village at West and Main Street, they're proposing chargers?
I think there's also conversation at the state level about whether this is going to be mandatory. It's causing a lot of consternation at the state level about whether it's going to be mandatory in future energy codes, MUBEC, like 2024 codes. So we may be talking about, like, spending a lot of energy getting, no pun intended, getting ahead of it three years early when it's going to be mandatory across the state. I'll check on that and confirm, come back to you guys, though, so. Not trying to tank it, just saying, I remember having a conversation-
Projects, right?
When that code is adopted, it'll be mandatory.
I can do all your houses.
No.
Getting ahead of it may make sense.
Yeah. It's up to you, yeah, that's-
It's up to us.
The policy decision councilor.
All right, Dan, I think we're at Mallet Drive and Lower Main Street?
Yep, so let me tackle Mallet Drive first. It's the more expensive, but also the more straightforward, in my opinion. So we, and Adam can correct me on the details, I believe he's already got us a grant, like Liz had pointed out, to design a shared use path, and maybe even some grant money towards the construction of that. Either way, we had previously, in years past, allocated a little over $1.5 million in our capital plan that was kind of due to be up for spending in this coming year for Mallet Drive related projects. And I support all of that, I continue to support all of that. My only concern with this one is going too small. I think if we repave Mallet Drive, plant a couple of trees, make a wider shoulder, and call it good, we've missed a huge opportunity. All the things that Liz said in her introduction, I think, are critical. I think when we sold this one at the downtown vision, it was a boulevard that changes the nature of that street to make it a pedestrian-friendly street that encourages different kinds of development. So those lots will become more expensive lots, they'll be primed for different kinds of development than they are now, which is sort of parking lot and front store in the back. And they'll be a part of downtown, because our downtown is sort of limited geographically and this is a way to extend it. So I don't want to go too small on this, I want to make sure we set the bar kind of high on this. I don't know that a million and a half dollars is going to cover it, and I don't want to pave Mallet Drive because it's time to do it, and then the rest of it will never get done if we just rebuild it with a wider shoulder. So I want to maintain this as a big ambitious project.
Council Bradley?
Yeah, this is, obviously attracts a lot of eyeballs because it's got so much money attached to it and, you know, it was hard to, from, for me, to reading the charter documents to really understand it. I spent a lot of time with Adam this week trying to understand it and thank you, Adam, for clarifying what it's about. I think it would be really helpful if you took the council through what the pieces of this are and what they cost, and what the likely or possible grant funding is for each one. So you can see, as I've concluded, as Dan has suggested, that extending the things that we are already funding and going to do makes perfect sense for really what is small money compared to what the charter document suggests it could be.
Sure thing. I was going to suggest the same. Mallet Drive is a complex project. I encourage leadership to keep things simple. It's very easy to dive into the details as we wrestle with money and time and scope. If I do my job well, I will boil it down to the essentials. So here we go. Mallet Drive has been in the works for almost a decade, and there have been many meetings, many design charrettes, many community surveys about what Mallet Drive should look like. And everyone agrees it needs to be safer, traffic needs to be calmer, it needs to provide bicycle and pedestrian safety physically separated from vehicles, okay? That's, that happened, that started at the Act of Living, in the Act of Living Committee a decade ago. So Mallet Drive can be broken down into essentially four segments. We already know about the bridge segment. We passed a bond to fund a 12-foot wide path across the bridge. Those monies are not in this charter because they're, it's already under construction, okay? The other piece is the shared use path that Dan started to allude to, Councilor Pilch. The Act of Living Committee and Complete Streets Committee rolled up their sleeves and they put together a grant application for design and construction of a shared use path from the bridge connection to Main Street. We were successful in getting a design grant to design the shared use path, a $250,000 grant. Town kicks in $50,000, state kicks in $200,000. I interpreted that reward, that grant reward, as do a good job with design, come back to us later for construction. So within the $1.55 million is construction funding of the shared use path. Also within that is paving of Mallet Drive. Mallet Drive is eligible for paving in year 2025. And we want to capitalize on that opportunity because federal money gets funneled through the state and through PACS, Portland Area Comprehensive Transportation System, and we're on that shortlist to receive about half of the paving money, okay? I make no guarantees if we'll get any. We could get 75%. The job that you don't see me do is going to those PACS meetings and fighting for those dollars. As of right now, I got about half of the paving dollars. Again, I make no guarantees, so within the $1.55 million is the full cost of paving.
How much?
$450,000. Could be half of that, we hope. We want to capitalize on that because if we don't pave in 2025, it'll be at least three years before we can go back for another grant, and by then, the road will have fallen below eligibility status to get the grant. I'm starting to get into the details, but bear with me. So we have, we have the shared use path, we have the paving work, and then we have this $300,000 within the $1.55 million to construct the road as a complete street. In December of 2020, council leadership adopted a complete streets policy that says we will design the street for road dieting, traffic calming, landscaping, lighting, bike ped connections. We need not have all of those elements, but we did adopt a policy that said we will follow those guidelines. So that's part three of the Mallet Drive. Part four is this more future concept of the boulevard. And some of the committee members felt more comfortable calling the boulevard a complete street. They're essentially synonymous, but they are different because the boulevard concept takes into account land use changes and rezoning, and that was too far off into the future to go even beyond a planning, a $50,000 request for planning funds. So four elements, paving, shared use path, complete street, implementation, and the boulevard planning grant. Okay? Cool.
Council Bradley?
Yeah, only because I spent so much time with you, I'm going to see if I can break what you said down a little bit so the numbers are a little clearer-
Yep.
-as I now understand them. So we're going to do on the bridge what we're going to do, and it's all paid for. It's not in this $1,550,000. But it does have a multimodal path that we want to connect to Main Street, and that's the $750,000 number that you're carrying in the 1-5-5-0, of which up to $250,000, you hope, could be funded through a grant. So it's either 750, or it's, if we get that grant, we apply for it and we get it because we've done the design work with money that they've already given us, that we can reduce that, we hope we can reduce it.
To about half.
About half of it, okay, so 350?
75.
375.
Yep.
And then the paving. The paving is already in our capital budget, right?
It's in the five-year program.
But it's there. I mean, we've already-
We have not appropriated for the paving, it's in the five-year plan.
But it's in the five-year plan. And we could get up to half of that amount funded through this state grant that you're talking about if they deal with us through the process you described to me, is we're on a list, we're at the end of the list, we hope there's going to be money left, we hope that they'll give it to us. So you are left with, if you take half of that out, which is half of 450, which is 225, so you can take out almost $600,000 of that, so you're down to about $900,000. And then you're in, the rest of it is the, what you're calling the complete street number, which is a $300,000 number, which could be a lot less than that or more than that depending on what the design comes out.
Yeah.
Leave it at 300, and then there's $50,000 for planning work for a boulevard, okay? So those, that's how it all breaks down. And if you do it that way, it's not, it's nowhere near 1-5-5-0, it's more like a million, maybe a million one, as reduced by whatever grants we get, which we're hopeful we will get.
Yep.
So again, I got a lot of encouragement out of sitting down with you, working through the numbers, seeing that you can get a really good project continue, and you could also save some money by reducing the size of the multimodal path, for instance. There are other things to be considered. But you can go from the bridge to Main Street with a calm street, with multimodal pathing that mirrors the bridge, and potentially a crossroad from the school, safe school street across Mallet Drive so kids don't get killed, all for under a million dollars. And you don't have, I don't know the timing of it, when you have to spend it all, but it doesn't have to be all in this next year, or it could be, is there a three or four year window for that money?
It isn't nuts, it isn't so much as a deadline to spend, it's a, what's more important is to coordinate all of the elements with the completion of the bridge project. We want to all be working together. When the bridge wraps up, paving is being conducted, is happening.
So we need, what you're really saying is we need to commit to the worst number before we find out what the best number is going to be, because we've got to time it to the bridge construction.
I'm a little uncomfortable with commit, but essentially, I would capture it this way, the design grant, which we want to kick off soon-
Do you already have that money?
Will, that, the design of the path will tighten up all of these numbers that are presented to you.
And again, I'm trying to understand the timing of appropriation and spending, is that's related to the paving rather than the bridge? The construction part, I'm asking.
Of the paving?
Well, when you do, when, the timing of the paving and the ti, is connected, will determine the timing of the construction of the multimodal path, which is the bulk of the money that is going to need to be spent whether or not you get the grants.
I would advise that the bridge project completion, the paving work, and the shared use path-
Same time.
... contingent upon funding, those three projects, those circles, if you think, marry to create-
Okay, so that's 2025.
2025-ish, yep. Sorry for the long-winded answer.
So it's, we got to be thinking, to do Mallet Drive the way we're talking about it, which makes a lot of sense to me, we're talking about a million dollar commitment by 2025.
Correct.
And maybe less depending on grants.
Yep.
I don't know if that helps, but it helped me a lot.
But if we leave it at 1.5, I mean, we've got a vision, there's a part of the planning, but that's only a part of it. So I mean, I think to what Councilor Pilch was saying, let's plan and make this investment now where it makes the most sense. Let's not limit ourselves to saying, oh, we got to stay to a million dollars, or like, let's really try, you know? If we're already planning on 1.5 anyway, and we might- If we're already planning on 1.5 anyway, and we might get all these grant monies to do it, well, maybe, you know, do we say, listen, the real project's going to be, you know, maybe we go out to bond for half a million. I mean, I'm just throwing out numbers or anything, but like, and say, okay, we're going to spend $2 million on this, and let's make sure we do it right. And if we come in under, great. That'll be wonderful, but I'm kind of with Dan and saying, or I think what Dan is saying, let's not mess this up. Let's not miss this opportunity to.
Don't, don't miss, don't misunderstand me. What I'm saying is, this is a great project, and it's going to cost us a lot less money than a million five, when you really look at the hard numbers. And much less than that if, if you can get grants. So I'm saying, spend all the money you need to spend in order to get it done. I agree with you. Okay? But I don't think you have to, it just makes it easier for me to raise my hand and say, yes, I'm excited by this, if the number isn't 1-5-5-0, and it's really more like 1, or maybe 1-1, something like that.
1 to 1.55. Let's just.
Well, you can, okay, it just helps me to, to go on through.
Because, Ed, and that was a great, when we met those couple of times, it was a great dress rehearsal for tonight. And I use a range because I made no guarantees that. Yeah. It's, it would be foolish for me to be like, yeah, you know?
Plan for the worst, hope for the best.
One, there's already 1.700 million in the capital program for next fiscal year.
Currently in FY '24.
In FY '24 for next fiscal year. Tag just as paving.
Okay, but, but that's not going to go pay for more paving than what.
No, but I'm saying if you're talking about 1.5, we're already planning, if that's the match to the, all the other money that's out there, we've already been planning for this amount, so.
So you're saying we already have it?
We don't have the money yet, but we've been planning to spend the money.
The second part of this that catches your eye is the $10 million for what we don't know is a boulevard. There's no way in hell, excuse me, that I would vote for that personally. I don't see any benefit to a boulevard. I see a lot of benefit to Mallet Drive as you describe this project. So I wouldn't spend the $50,000 to plan to spend $10 million that I don't have. So you can take, from my perspective, you can take that off this number. But if you, if somebody's really seriously thinking about a $10 million boulevard, for some reason that I can't appreciate right now, I'll listen, but I, I don't think I vote for it. So I don't vote for the 50. I'm sorry to be so vocal, but I spent so much time trying to figure out what this was over the last week that I just couldn't resist speaking again. Matt's laughing at me.
I want to monopolize the time if I just want to speak, but I, I just want to kind of put in another plug to make sure we're on the same page because what Adam said is, you know, we're leaving out the changes in land use and the kind of larger scale redesign. Maybe it's not $10 million, but I think it's significantly more than a million dollars. It's only 1,500 odd, you know, feet of road we're talking about, but there's a huge opportunity here, and it doesn't have to be all our own money. I don't know the details of it, but Sanford got $20 million in, in grant money for their downtown to kind of rebuild it in some way, shape, or form. I think there's a lot of opportunity here. I think it lines up well with what the state and the, you know, the larger community is saying they want to do. I don't know how serious they are about it, but they're saying that they want to make things less about moving cars quickly through downtowns and changing them into more pedestrian-friendly zones, all the stuff that we saw with Principal Group, all the stuff that we talked about as a community. So there's a bigger project here, and if we just pave Mallet Drive and stripe it a little bit differently and, and, and try and calm traffic a little bit, that's better. But that other project is not getting done in our lifetime.
May I make a quick comment?
Yep, go ahead, Andy.
Just wanted to clarify on the.
Just yourself, please.
Oh, yeah, Andy Spalding, formerly of Active Living Committee. On the $50,000 proposal to study a future complete street or boulevard concept, one thing I would say that could be a benefit, I, when I heard you, Ed, say that the 10 million of future spending, that's pretty scary. I never thought of it like that. Those of us who've talked about this study would say the things you didn't hear about from Adam are the potential to someday have a sidewalk and, and bike path up the north side of Mallet. We know we're going to get a light at the northbound ramp. We potentially have a safe, safe crossing from the multi-use path to this potential sidewalk. So there are elements, I think, specific projects that could be defined, that's a hypothetical one, from the study. Those by themselves are not $10 million projects, but they would be wonderful things to know about to have the best possible road in the future. Just, just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you.
Daryl?
I think the, the reason I may support the $50,000, we're looking at the intersection of Main Street down to School Street and Mallet Drive, and we all know what a bottleneck that is now on a busy day at School Street. If you want to turn left, miss a pedestrian, either crossing from the bank in front of you, if you miss that one, they're going to get you when they're coming out from a car, when you get down to School Street. So let's, you know, I haven't whacked one yet, but I've had a couple of close calls. So we really need to take a look at this if in fact we're coming up. And my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, this would be a, a study to see where we move. It's not committing us to where we're going down the road, but at least it will look some options. Is that correct, Dan?
But as far as I know, yeah. For me, it's a timing thing. I'm, I'm full in support of the $50,000 for the study. I would say drop everything else, do it now, do it tomorrow so that when the paving project comes along, we already know the results of that study, and we know what our options are, and we can say option A is the, the $400,000 repaving, option B is grander trees down the middle of the road, and option C is the full, you know, the full monty. But we're not going to know until we do the study. So yes, absolutely, spend the 50 grand, do the study, and in addition, do it as soon as we possibly can and think big with it.
I think the whole idea was to understand what we could do down there, and it's not going to be, I don't think, when the plan comes through, it's going to be, we got to do this all at one time. Boom, $10 million. You can plan to make it happen over a number of years. Oh, we won't know that till we have a plan.
Adam? This comment is, it's not editorial, it's not my opinion, it's fact. Representative Melanie Sax has offered to help with that planning grant and go to the State Department of Economic Development and get planning funds to supplement that as, so it's not, it's up to 50,000? And, but it could be half.
Question for Adam?
Yep.
You've got this 300 and something thousand dollar, or maybe two, planning grant already for Mallet Drive. Can some of it be diverted into the $50,000 to study the ideas that Andy Spalding just talked about?
I'm going to be conservative and say no, but all it takes is a phone call from me to the state, the DOT, to get you a definitive answer.
Okay.
And just for clarification, Ed is referring to the design grant versus this planning grant. So it's probably obvious, but when, when I approach my projects, they start in the planning phase, then they move to design, engineering phase, and then they go to construction. So they're, they're all married together, but they, they're unique. Planning, high level, design is, you know, is the details. Construction, obviously, is implementation.
But your money that we're talking about is, is planning money?
The 250, yeah, the, the 50,000 is planning money.
The two, the other grant you got is for design?
That's for design.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to note that we've been at this for two and a half, and we're almost done. So I want to get to Lower Main Street so that we can tackle the last two here in, in a consensus vote to move forward if possible. If not, we'll take a hard vote. Dan, is it, you want to set up the Lower Main Street conversation, or?
Yeah, I will, and then I'll also invite anybody who hasn't spoken about Mallet Drive, if they have something they want to say, by all means chime in, but I'll tee off Lower Main Street, and then if you haven't talked about Mallet Drive and you want to, don't, don't feel like you can't. Lower Main Street, this one is, is a little simpler. There's $750,000 for an off, well, I don't want to say off-road, I think it's off-road. It's a shared use path, and Liz and Adam can clarify, shared use path for bicyclists, pedestrians, wheelchairs. And then another $35,000 to study Lower Main Street, you know, between Shaw's and the rail rig bridge, to say, what should we do with it? Do we plant trees down the middle? Do we make islands? Do we change it in any way? One of the theories I heard, not, I wasn't at a Complete Streets meeting, but somebody mentioned the Route 1 south of Falmouth on the way to Portland, how they kind of redesigned that. I mean, is that what we want our Lower Main Street to look like? I, I don't know, but that's what the study is for. The shared use path, I, I don't know if that's the same as or separate than the Concord-Gully-Brook Trail that we've been talking about through the woods that would go behind Bass Savings and Gritty's and come out by the L.L. Bean headquarters. But it, it might be the same thing. So I could ask for some clarification on there. I don't have as much detail on this one, but I, but that's how the money breaks out anyway.
Okay, real quick. Just take one step back. The Mallet Drive and Lower Main Street were grouped as one project in the downtown vision. The Complete Streets Committee felt, and I, and I agree, that they should be separated. And because they're, they're, they just have different characters, they're two different stretches of the road, yet they're both gateways to the village. We're talking about Lower Main Street, which again was loosely described as a gateway or transformation of that southern approach into the village. And where Concord Brook Trail has been in the works for a few years now. The committee feels that getting the pedestrians, getting that shared use path, the $750,000 built, and pedestrians and bicyclists off the road frees up opportunities for the, the, the traffic calming, complete streets elements that go with the on-road portion. I can go on, but I'm not going to.
Okay, thank you. So I, I just want to point out too that we're, we're not voting on 700 or, you know, $5 million worth of road improvements that are going to be stretched out over several years. The whole emphasis of the charters is to get the vision and, and to point us in the direction. There'll be subsequent, numerous subsequent years where we will be making adjustments to our capital budget, getting much more detailed information about grant opportunities and matching funds from the state, from DOT, from other planning grant sources. So I think we'll have a lot of opportunity, and I, again, I just really want to encourage us not to get too hung up on exactly the, the number because it's going to change as we get from early estimate to concept to design and, and really tighten up those budgets. And then, you know, if we have something that's too big, then we break it into a couple of pieces and do it over a couple of years. I think the important part that we're going to look back to five or six years from now is that we took an enormously inclusive process, which took in a lot of input and a lot of staff time and a lot of volunteer time, to create a layout of projects that have gone through a process, a winnowing process already. And we're endorsing those in various forms to move forward. So I think this is an opportunity for us to not hesitate, to think big. We're not spending all of this money all at once. We're not committing all of this money even in this or the next fiscal year. What we're really doing is laying out a vision for all of the elements that we're endorsing as vital for creating a new vision for downtown Freeport and our connectivity around the community. Councilor Bradley?
That was eloquent, and I take it to heart, but I think part of what we're here and we're being asked to do is to indicate whether projects that have been identified through this bottom-up process are of significant benefit to justify the estimations of costs that they, that may occur. And part of that is, is that number so big you couldn't, you couldn't swallow it? And part of it is, boy, I can see, as everyone in this room can, other priority projects that are going to have numbers attached to them just as big as these, and I'm trying to figure out how a town our size can afford to do all of it. So I'm going to be a little bit more conservative and more focused on the costs of some of these things than your approach might suggest. And with that respect, I don't see personally how Concord Brook in an off-road site there justifies us spending $750,000 if that's roughly, that's just my view, my view of it. You know, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with Concord Brook. I know we're putting money aside for doing it, but it's not a very high priority for me in the downtown visioning process. And so I, with all due respect to all the volunteers to do that, as somebody who also protects the taxpayer, I don't want to spend that kind of money doing Concord Brook when it doesn't seem to me to be anything but what you're going to tell me is a valuable recreational path that connects one part of town to another and part of your, your complete streets project. This is a downtown visioning project for me, and $750,000 for that isn't benefit enough to justify me saying I want to pursue it as a project. And your name, and you want to say to me?
My name is.
I know who you are. I'm teasing you.
Well, so there's the, there's a lot of people who are very interested in getting outside, and I also think it's a benefit for the town, it can be a benefit for our town.
Mike, Mike works just fine. It doesn't amplify in this room.
It's my ears, not your mouth.
You know, having recreational opportunities in the town is, it's a draw for commerce, and it's a, it's a, it's a satisfier for the people that live here. But more importantly, there was a TIF that I, as I understand it, will be paying for it, so it.
There's not, there's no TIF that's going to pay for the $750,000.
So I think that there is.
The L.L. Bean TIF, so there, there actually is TIF dollars to pay for this over time. The L.L. Bean TIF that, yeah, that we voted on three years ago or so, before our time on the council.
Okay, but that, but that TIF money that we got from L.L. Beans is not designated for anything. There's a whole range of things. It may be designated in the charter is coming from that, but we have the discretion to spend whatever money we accumulate over time on any one of a number of things, and I'm just saying I don't see this being.
I think there's, but the TIF is specifically related to exactly this type of thing.
It's one of, it's one of several things that that TIF is exactly related to. Lot of, lot of benefits that we had, we, we wrote into the TIF that we could fund from that money when we actually get it, which isn't going to be for years from now.
Next year. It's already accumulating.
Oh, I understand. Not at any level.
Starting next year.
How much, how much a year?
Right now?
No, next year, how much?
Yeah, yeah, immediately, I don't know.
Tiny money.
$500,000, I'll, they'll get you an answer.
So if your answer is that it's TIF-funded, one, that's still tax money. Two, there's other things we might spend it on.
But it's not residence tax money. It's not resident tax money.
Of course it is.
It's.
It's just a, it's a redirection evaluation that could have, could have gone to the benefit of the taxpayer.
Okay, well, I do believe this is a benefit to the taxpayers.
Well, that's fair.
And I will also tell you that it, there's a, a path going from Yarmouth all the way up, we're working on a path going from Yarmouth all the way up to downtown, and this is one piece of it. Jake?
Jake? I'm just going to point out that it's 10:30. I think that at some point, we've got to say, listen, this has been a great conversation, but how much more are we going to accomplish tonight? Obviously, I'm a proponent of this one. I think that the east-west loop connecting the Hedgehog Mountain and Desert Road aspect to the downtown, you need it from both ways, make the full circle. I can go on and on on that, but I think if we're just generally trying to say, yeah, we agree with these projects and the amount that's being spent in this year, I don't think we have a problem tonight. This is a future down-the-road issue with Mallet Drive. I think that the L.L. Bean TIF money does need to be talked about. We need to have a much bigger conversation about what that looks like. I mean, to be honest, you bond for it, and then all of a sudden, that TIF money is paying off the bond, so it doesn't impact the tax base right now. Like, there are a lot of opportunities here, and that's an off-the-cuff idea. But are we in general approval of this? And I know we were trying to eliminate some of these, but I just. And I know we were trying to eliminate some of these, but I just, I don't think we're going to make a lot more progress tonight, is my plea. And I said I wouldn't be here till 1 o'clock in the morning.
We're not. You're doing 10:30. The only thing I'd like to put out about just the Concord Brook is that it's also part of the greenway we're trying to make that goes from Maine all the way down to Florida, right? And it's part of, and it also helps, helps with climate change because it brings in people that can ride their bicycles to town instead of driving their cars. It reduces people driving, period.
That almost got people.
And it's also part of a beer path. You can go from, you know, Good Fire Grill up to Maine Brewing Company up to, you know, whatever's next up there.
Public or not?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob. Briefly.
Very briefly, Freeport Climate Action now wants to promote bikes in town. As Chip said, we want to cut down on driving, we want to save energy, we want to get people outside. Something we don't have in Freeport and we need. Please support it.
Dan, do you have enough input now? Do you want to, how do you want to handle these last two?
I feel like I would get lynched if I suggested that we should discuss more, so I think we have enough input. I feel more comfortable that the council has a better understanding of what's involved with each of these. So as the discussions we have over the next couple of weeks and months continue, we understand it better. So when we talk about the $750,000 for lower Main Street, and does it come from TIF funds? Does it not come from TIF funds? Do we bond it now and pay it out of the TIF later? Like, we understand it. And I think if we say, do we spend the $35,000 for designing lower Main Street and figuring out what we need to spend, we understand that question. So I'm okay with where we landed tonight if we stop the conversation here.
I would just ask, are we authorizing the FY '23 budget items right now? Or are those going to come back to us individually at some point and we're going to like line item, yes, those?
My understanding is that the...
No to the first question.
The staff that are going to produce the capital budget and any, any element of this that might hit the operating budget, which I don't think will be much of anything, will come back to us in budget presentations, but the staff needed to know, are we, are we moving forward with these dozen projects or some subset thereof? So we will, we're absolutely not authorizing any money tonight, I can tell, on these projects. But we're giving direction to the staff to either include some or most or all of the various elements in the 12.
I only ask because it's FY '23, so I mean, that's what, right now, this is current dollars, so...
Yeah, you're not talking about stuff for next year's budget. You're talking about the small items that were authorized for this year. This doesn't do any of that, no. You might want to in the future, but this doesn't do it.
Jake, I think one of my takeaways is we got to come back with that resolution to propose to you guys to say, for the next six months, next four months, here's money that was requested, that it seemed like there's consensus to spend, do we have authorization to spend it? And that's stuff like the grant match for parking and 5,000 per sewer connection grants and things like that. So we'll come back and ask for approval.
All right. So, Dan, what are we going to have at our meeting on February 28th related to these 12?
Well, we're giving these 12 to Peter and Jessica to put into the budget so they know what to propose in the budget for FY '24 and beyond. And FY '24, I think we've got some pretty good clarity after tonight. The beyond is still a little fuzzy, but I think we can ask some good questions and maybe propose an alternative, A and B kind of thing.
All right.
Do I make a motion to adjourn?
Love to hear that motion.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, been moved in second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you all. Wow. Woo!